Good evening and welcome to the Brockton Public Schools School Committee Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee. Today is Tuesday, October 7, 2025. Time is 5:30. This meeting will be held and accessible to the public via Comcast Channel 8 and 107.1 HD version and online via this link, www.youtube.com/fordbrottonchannels. And we will start this meeting by establishing a quorum. Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
And the superintendent is present and myself, Tony Rodriguez is present. We have kind of a, I don't want to say lengthy, but a very full agenda. First, we will get an update from our OPM on the Brockton High School project, Left Field Project Management, on the ongoing work that's being done in conjunction with the study and feasibility of the Brockton High School. Floors are yours. And I believe this is a PowerPoint, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I will move.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kevin Sullivan. I'm serving as the project manager. The day-to-day contact from the, from the OPM side from Left Field.
Yeah.
You can walk around with it.
Yep. I'll try and stay in one place and we'll try and, is it on? No, that's all right. And we'll try and be as efficient as possible, given the, you know, the busy agenda for you all. So we just want to give you an update. We were in front of the school committee a couple of months back. And since that point, we've brought on our architect, KBA architects, and we've been doing a lot of work around the school, educational planning, visioning, and so forth. So feel free to ask questions, otherwise, you know, we'll certainly, yeah, we'll, we'll do that at the end. Perfect. All right, so we're in, we're currently in the feasibility study schematic design phase of MSBA. That starts once you bring the OPM, I'm sorry, once you bring the architect on. You can kind of see based on, this is like an MSBA flow chart where we are. We'll, we'll stay in the feasibility study schematic design phase for about the next year. We're going to work through, the first phase of, of this is called PDP. It's a preliminary design programming, which we really go through existing conditions of the building to try and determine what options we have here, on this site, other sites. And then the other part of this phase is really to explore the educational goals and visioning for the staff and in leadership. So this is where we are right now. This will take us through the next year. At, at the end of this first phase, PDP, we'll have a couple of options, probably this winter, maybe around December, and, and we'll move into the next phase, which is preferred schematic. At that point, we really refine our options. We have a lot more information at that stage, and we try and determine what is the best option here, the most cost-effective, educationally appropriate solution. Is it a new building? Is it some type of renovation addition? We don't have that information yet, but we're, we're looking at every option right now. Okay, so again, we've been doing a lot of work over the summer and especially over the, the past several weeks. I'm going to turn it over to Joe from the architecture firm, and he can talk about some of the efforts that have been happening.
Thanks, Kevin. My name is Joe Malanian with Castle Booze Architects and the project manager for our firm for this project. Here you can see most, but not all of the assessments that we have to do around the building for the existing condition study that Kevin mentioned. Many of these have come in in the past week. We're looking to get these completed by the end of this week. Borings for our geotechnical engineers will be starting in early November, and we have just received, or will receive this week, our building model. We had to have the entire building scanned through a point cloud type of process that is coming up because there were no available drawings for this building. So rather than go around with a tape measure and measuring every single little room, it's easier to have someone do it through a computer system, and so we had to get that done. Based on this process, we'll develop what's called a code compliance or baseline estimate for the project. That's just to show that if you didn't do anything else, but that if you brought the building up to current code standards and fitness, what would it cost? And that's generally not anything that can be done as part of a renovation project because it doesn't usually meet any of the requirements for the MSBA for minimum square footages for classrooms and their other educational goals. So that really is a baseline, just to give the committees an idea of where we stand. If you, if someone said, why don't we just bring it up to code? What would that cost? Well, that's the cost. That is going to be going to our estimator on the 20th of this month, and we expect to have a cost of that at another presentation of this body sometime in November. We, as we said, we did a building scan down. You can see this is an image from that building scan through the drones that they use to do the outside of the building. And these scans also do the inside of the building. Every single room was set up with a template that would then go through the drone to take the point cloud that they're now building into the model. That will give us a basis to use for the concepts that Kevin mentioned as part of Module 3A. Module 3A is really just looking at the existing conditions and the options that are available through that, and also to come up with concepts for the building, whether it's new concepts on this site, whether it's addition concept, whether it's a new building concept, basically just blocks of color on a sheet that represent the square footages that are developed through the visioning programs that we have. The visioning leads us into a space summary program that itemizes all the different rooms that exist in the building, number one, but also then tells us what rooms you need in the building. The visioning is, is, I'll get to that when I get to the drawing, I guess. The visioning is intended to provide us with an idea of what the building could be. You've been in this school for 50 or 60 years. People tend to make do the best they can with what they have. They become inured and, and used to it. We want people to think outside the box. We want people to think about what's the best way that we can educate students in Brockton. Our consultant for this process is Mike Perillo. We've already had a few meetings with Mike. Next slide, oh, actually, that slide. Go back one. Yeah, we've had the, the three meetings in blue with the check mark. And also this past week, we had the first one that's in yellow, which is a visioning group that included about 40 people. It was administrators from the school. It was students from the school. It was teachers from the school. It was people from the public. We try and get all kinds of viewpoints and perspectives on what would make a better school for Brockton, and that helps us to define the program that we're going to have for developing a new school in the next phase. We also, as part of, of that visioning process, went to visit two schools. I know that the district has probably visited other schools prior to this, but we, we selected Attleboro High School and Waltham High School. Just to give an idea of two comprehensive high schools that have multiple CTE programs that integrate those two things very well. We've, I, we designed, my firm designed Attleboro High School. I worked on that project. It's been very successful. People are very satisfied with it, and we get a lot of people coming in for tours to see how those two processes, the CTE program and the college education program are integrated together. The same thing happens in, in Waltham. They have a few more CTE programs than Attleboro does, but it's the same process. It's integrating those two different divergent paths together to make most available options to students. And again, the visioning working group, Priya and others were involved in this initial meeting we had where we went through with a smaller, what's called a working group, that was just about 15 people or so, and that allowed us to get an initial reading. We'll go through another two meetings with a larger group, I mentioned, of 40 people or so that had the students and the staff involved in it. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting to this meeting with a smaller group again that will allow us to itemize and, and finalize the project plan and the program. Schedule, Kevin, you want to talk about schedule?
I already touched on schedule a little bit in, in one of the earlier slides, but again, this is just kind of a snapshot in terms of, you know, where, where are we? District was invited in, you know, a couple of years ago. We certainly made some progress bringing on an OPM and an architect, and now we're still doing feasibility studies, schematic design. But as you can see, we're still very much at the beginning of the process. There's a lot of work and a lot of time before we, you know, get to a building or renovation. So this is really just to establish where we are in terms of MSBA's milestones. Our first submission to MSBA as part of this process is in December to hopefully attend a February board meeting, and then, you know, we'll keep moving from there. But certainly happy, happy to answer questions when we get to the end. And then I want to bring up Francois from Left Field, who's been community liaison and project manager for our team.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Francois Zalome, a community liaison. So just sharing some outreach that we've done in the community. As you can see, in September, we attended the Brockton Clean Energy Event. It was really primarily working alongside with WNBEs and really engaging on how they can take advantage of some of their clean energy efforts that Brockton has taken advantage of and being a part of, both Left Field and KBA are in attendance. Actually, on October 10th, Friday, we will be at the middle school career fair, just sharing information on how they, any information that they would like to learn about both being in construction, but also construction adjacent careers like OPM and project managers. So I think it'll be a great time for our middle schoolers and to, to learn more. And then on October 15th, there will be a Brockton Clean Energy Info Session where there will be more WNBEs that will be participating. Our efforts are, are not only to be part of the community, but also have the community part of this project. And so I think this here will allow us to really get a chance to meet and know some of the contractors and subcontractors that are in this area, and hopefully we can find a way to get some people to participate in this project if possible. Lastly, our project website is live, and so the, the website is there. There's also a QR code. As we continue to have meetings and information, that will be updated on the website, and the website is multilingual, and so you're able to get communities engaged and involved and learning in their own languages so that they can be as knowledgeable as possible in, in, in this, in, in this project that's happening.
Just really quickly, upcoming meetings. We do have monthly school building committee meetings. There's a subset of the school committee and, and city staff that make up the school building committee as part of the MSBA's process. So they will be in attendance, but I just want to encourage everyone to come. Everyone's welcome. They've been on Zoom. The, the meetings are typically posted, but you should all have my information if you have questions, concerns, you want to come, or you just want to meet separately, we'll make it happen. But upcoming meetings, October 23rd and, and November 20th. And with that, just want to open it up to questions.
Can you just reflect the records, Jerry, that Mrs. Sullivan is in attendance? With that, I'll open up the floor to questions from the members. I know myself and Representative Vega, we've been on these tours and sit on the building committee, and it's a, it's a detailed process and a lot of work and time, and there's a collaboration from educated students in the community with this whole process. With that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments from the members. Mr. Vega?
I mean, as the vice chair mentioned, we've had the opportunity to be at a lot of these meetings, and I just want to maybe use this as an opportunity to help clarify for people who might be watching or who have questions later on. At the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned, we, we saw that grid of what surveys have been completed and which reports have been completed. Right now, there's only two areas that have both survey and report complete, structural and security. There's a lot of concern around security and safety at Brockton and BPS schools. Can you help people understand how you assessed the current security environment? What did that look like? Who did you talk to?
Sure. I'm going to turn it over to the architecture team because kind of their specialty.
So we, as I said, hire probably 20 or so consultants who specialize in different areas of construction and design throughout the project, one of which is a security consultant who by chance also happens to have been an architect. We've used him on several projects in the past. And we also have as a consultant, the Ed Davis Group. Ed Davis is vastly familiar with the building. They've done security analyses for this, this building in the past through the city of Brockton, and we engaged him on the team to get that, that historical knowledge of, of the security systems in the building as part of our project. So we have both historical knowledge feeding into new designs from our other engineers to try and get a comprehensive design for security for either whatever is developed in this building as a renovation addition or whatever is developed in a new building.
And with that, with some of the, there's so many groups within groups, I'm forgetting the names, but when we gathered not too long ago in the principal's conference room to kind of do some vision boarding, it's worth noting too that we had a member of our school police there who had a lot to contribute to the conversation. While we have you there, because I'm greedy, Joe, I think you've come to understand that, what are the opportunities for our students and for some of the academics with this experience that's going on right now? I mean, as we sit as a community talking about reimagining our high school, what are the opportunities for our students in that process? But also like, what are the opportunities for Left Field or KBA to be in classrooms?
Well, we did do a walkthrough with Principal Casskill, what we call a shadow day, where we went around the school, looked at the passing of students. We looked at the classrooms themselves. We looked at how the teachers teach. We'll continue to do that and probably have another visioning session with them that'll allow us to shadow. In the past, we've sat in classrooms and watched an entire class to see how they teach and what they need. You know, sometimes you realize that people need to have whiteboard surface for students because they're taking pieces of paper and tucking them up on the wall and writing on that when they're doing group activities. And so whatever way the teachers teach, we need to develop the classrooms to support that teaching method. We also involve, as I said, students in the visioning sessions and staff in the visioning sessions. We'll be having two meetings on Thursday morning, one with special education specialists from the school and one with CTE specialists. Greg Joint is our CTE specialist from KBA, who was working on the design of the CTE rooms and that program going forward. And we'll continue to have other meetings with other staff within the school and different departments to further develop the, the schedule and, and the program that we need to have for the new school.
And, and again, this is really so folks understand that it might be watching or listening to this later. So Left Field, KBA, so we all represent individual wards within the city of Brockton. Is KBA and Left Field prepared to come to ward level discussions to answer questions from residents?
Francois could answer this one, but I'll give it a shot. Yeah, we will meet anyone, anywhere, anytime, whether it's one person or 200. Just tell us where. We'll be there. We'll give them an update. We, we want that feedback throughout this process. We don't want to just be coming to neighborhoods and wards a year from now and telling them what we are going to do. We want, we want the feedback now.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was one of the, you know, talking points that we mentioned that we can actually tee that up and do some listening tours and presentation to all four corners of the city, northeast, west, south, using our, our middle schools and engaging in that. So we'll work with our communications director, Mr. Mayblum, and set some dates through the superintendent and our architects and get it going. Mr. Gomes?
Thank you. I believe Mr. Vega has touched on some of the questions that I had. I also noticed there were two of the subsections that were completed. One of the questions I had, I believe you've touched on it already, is what information or volume of information have you received from the community and other organizations that you guys are in communication with, and how is that being used to develop the overall plan?
Sure. I'm going to call up Francois just to talk about some of his experiences so far, and maybe KBA can add to that for some of the sessions I've had.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So we have been reaching out to different constituents and, and trying to schedule meetings and listen to the community. We have currently completed a, I'm sorry, I'm just blinking out right now, but we just currently completed a presentation that we collaborated with the school officials, Superintendent Taliani and, and, and Principal Casskill. And so we're ready to, to, to go out and meet anybody anytime, as Kevin mentioned. So we're, we're just waiting and, and actually doing some outreach. We've reached out to the NAACP. We've reached out to Eastern League of Brockton, and, you know, as we've gone to different meetings like this, we've always shared, we're ready and willing to meet anyone. So if you or anyone here would like us out, we're more than happy to be there.
But we haven't received any specific feedbacks or question concerns about the whole project itself?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. And, and our website is, is there as well. So on our website, there are links and emails for which those that may not be able to make out, you know, to, to these events can forward information and feedback and questions to us, and we'll be more than happy to communicate that way as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I do encourage community members to do reach out and pose questions, comments, concerns, so we are, we have all this information as we develop. It does seem like a complex process and there's a lot of steps involved.
Yes.
I appreciate the, the time and dedication into looking into every aspect before we, we determine what needs to be done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Not so much a question, but just a statement. I think one of the reasons we selected the, the current firm is just after you spoke about making sure that the community is involved in every step. Not also the design basically caught my eyes. You know, I graduated Brockton High and just to see the future for future boxes to come and just have a better school than they have now. But I think one of the major things was just how you spoke about making sure the community is always involved in every step and just giving us critiques and what they want to see with this project. So I definitely think we picked the right firm that you're continuing, you have been doing the process of getting the community and students also involved in what they want this school to look like in the future. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Absolutely. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further questions from any of the members or comments? Seeing none. I just want to close off and just say, I was very jealous walking into Attleboro. I don't know about you, Mr. Vega, and, I mean, obviously it's a new school and just, you know, some of the, the amenities that they have, the library, you know, having a yoga room. Some of the lockers don't even have combination using their ID so it can cut down on time. And just the culinary program, it felt like I was walking into a restaurant, you know, the, the CTE side, the salon. It was just like a one-stop shop, like you could just go in and, and, you know, drop your vehicle off and get it fixed and go get a haircut and then have a meal and, and then get your blood pressure taken. So those are, those, you know, I, I was very jealous and, you know, it's been a long time and, you know, you know, as, you know, elected officials and those that are running for office, you know, we all have to buy in and get the community's support to make sure that this project is, is done and it's done the right way so we can service our students that spend a long time coming. And it's kind of a, you know, a disservice that would, you know, we're at this point with our students, and we just have to make sure that, you know, this is a mega project and then we have the, the support and the funding source to make sure whatever it takes to get it done. So thank you, Ed.
Thank you. And we believe everyone in the city deserves this, and we're here to help.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next agenda item is the request for a proposal for an RFP for Marciano Stadium, which is a turf upgrade and track resurfacing, purchasing, reinstallation of the turf field and track resurfacing. I do, I'm not sure, Ken, I can't see because I'm blinded up here. Facilities Director Ken Thompson's here can give us an update. We did, back in December, Facility Subcommittee did approve numerous designs of our turf fields. Now it's the funding source, but Marciano Stadium is on the priority because it's used a lot by all of our sports and, and also with our rentals, and we can accommodate it because our students come first, but Ken can give us an update on the RFP.
So as the vice chair mentioned, Activitas, we brought in about a year ago or so, and they gave us a proposal. And what we've since found out is that we have the ability to purchase the turf directly, and they'll sell it to us, and then we can go out for an RFP for the installation only. And preliminary numbers, looks like we could save a few hundred thousand dollars by doing it that way. It's in the beginning stages, but we're going to be looking into that now. As everybody knows, the turf itself, and kudos again to our outside grounds and facilities people who have maintained that field, it's beyond its useful life, but we continue to maintain it, so we still use it and it still passes the test, but it's time and it needs to be replaced. So we want to go forward with it. We want to put that RFP together, but again, we have to confirm funding sources. We understand that as well. So I am putting the rest of that information together, so once we get the go-ahead, we'll be prepared to put it out to bid.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Oliver?
Did they just recently do a test on it, on the turf?
Yes, they did.
Do we know the results of it?
It's called a GMAX test.
Yeah.
And it passed. I don't know the particular numbers.
Okay.
But it's getting close, obviously, just by virtue of the age, but it did pass.
Okay. Just want to make sure, like, what's the percentage, even though it passed, but we're at the level that we need to, we definitely need to work at as soon as possible, definitely for the football team and all the other sports that play on the turf, just for safety reason.
Again, with, with our turf, we could probably get two years' worth of use out of it in a year, just because of the amount of activity, which we encourage. It's the community plus all our school programs, but it's time.
When was the last time it was, are we done?
2011 or 2010?
I think it was 10.
I think it was 2010.
Oh, yeah. It's overdue. 15 years? Yeah, that's definitely overdue.
Said, we've maintained it well, and every time they come on test it, they're impressed by the, what it looks like, but it's time.
Yeah, they do a great job, especially after every game. I see them out there, but, um, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. So we have to identify a funding source, you said?
Yes.
First, before we put the RFP out?
Right.
Okay. So we don't, we don't know where the funding's coming from?
Well, there's been discussions, but, uh, you know, once we know that and confirm that, then we'll be able to put the, we'll be prepared to go out with the RFP once we know.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Azak followed by Mr. Vega.
Not really a question, but more of a comment. It's not really a choice. We have to do this. It's a safety issue for our kids. Last time, I believe they came before us, the rating was right there. So, I mean, we're really getting close. We're beyond the lifespan, I believe. Isn't it about 10 years? And we're, we're pushing the 15 years.
We're on 15 years now.
So it's not really a choice. This isn't like a luxury item that we're, we're really, we have to do it, and it's for safety, and I don't believe we have a choice. And I don't believe we have a choice of going back to just removing the turf completely and just going back to grass. Like, once it's a turf field, it's, we have to replace it with a turf field. I mean, I'm not as familiar, if you can correct me with info?
Full disclosure, you could go back to a grass field.
Okay.
But that's not the, you know, the intent, but you can go back to a grass field.
Okay. So, I mean, again, that's, we really need to, as a committee, figure out where we're gonna get this funding source because it is top priority. If I, if I do remember from the last meeting we had, I believe Mr. Cairo, someone came before us and they did mention that it is top priority to get that done, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, just confirming, thank you.
All set? Are you all set?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
It's more of a technical question, curiosity for me. So, I love the idea that we're buying our turf direct and then only paying for installation. Where do we put the turf in between purchase and installation?
The arrangement with the vendor would be that they would hold it for us.
Hold it, okay.
And when we're ready for install, they deliver it.
It'd be, okay, so it'll be simultaneous.
Because you would have no capacity to store it, you're absolutely right.
Right, okay, all right, appreciate that, thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Mr. Gomes?
That just raised another question. Have we looked at the logistics of, I mean, cost effectiveness of whether we buy the turf, pay for installment, or buy the whole service?
Yes, to a certain extent. We've got a budget estimate from Activitas, who did the whole package. And based on that number versus what we know, I have a good idea what the turf will cost and a budget estimate of the installation, we'd be saving a considerable amount of money by doing it that way.
Okay. That's mine, thank you.
So, yeah, I had a brief conversation with Ken and Kevin. So, the, it's, like you said, it's gonna save just a estimate, close to 400,000 or probably more by purchasing the product. I think there was a price tag of just over 600,000 to purchase all of the turf. And the other piece too is that in December, if you go back and watch the meeting, that there's a new padding shock absorbent that's one of the safety mechanisms that all of the turf fields across the Commonwealth, specifically in the schools that are actually installing. So, it's gonna save tremendous amount of money. So, the other piece with purchasing is we do the, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that we're gonna look at the three quotes with the state combines. And then, the RFP would basically just go just for installation only.
Correct.
Thank you. That being said, I will entertain a motion relative to this agenda item. Not everybody jump at once.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and reinstallation of the turf field as described tonight.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Vega, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. Show of hands. Unanimous, it passes, thank you very much. And I, and I just, you know, just want to take this time also to thank every member of this committee. I know Mr. Sullivan is not present with us, kinda under the weather. When I first got on this committee in 2020, this conversation, which led to me, you know, moving forward to create the Music Arts and Athletics Subcommittee to address this with our athletic department. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for supporting the designs of all of those fields that, that we need greatly to be done in the city. You know, because, you know, this is for the students, number one. Like, Mrs. Oliver, you know, the field at West is horrible. And like, I played at, on that field and it's the same condition from 1989. And it's kinda sad that here's 2025, our students are still playing on that same field. So, I'm very happy that this moved forward and hopefully, we can identify some sources moving this forward. But the other piece too is that the council did approve 1.8 million to resurface Marciano Stadium. So, that money is there. I'm hoping it's there, so we know how finances work when it comes to city side government. Thank you. The next is a request to return the Howard School, 837 North Main Street, to the Brockton School Department and School District for the reopening of pre-K slash elementary. Superintendent, do you want to talk about this? The floor is all yours. Ken, we might have a few questions for you, so don't go too far.
Oh, no, I was gonna, I can add on.
Oh, you, you want me to? Oh, okay, I mean, so, obviously, we know that our numbers are increasing dramatically across the district. The committee did discuss this, you know, prior to some of the new members of opening the new pre-K center in the district. So, last year, myself, the mayor, former administration, we did tour the Howard School, the Whitman School to see what building would be feasibly fit for us to move this initiative forward. The Howard School, we did take a tour about a month ago, two months, to look at the makeup of the building, to see what, kinda get an analysis of a cost. But at the point right now, it's that before anything happens, we, you know, we do have to plan this out, it does take some time, it is gonna take some money. We are running out of space, as you know, that we're using libraries for classrooms. And we, this body here, I know everybody supports of bringing back our libraries. We need to address this sooner than later so we can plan this out and get a actual cost analysis. I know there was a analysis already done in the past, it's just waiting to get the final numbers updated so we can move forward and the district can plan on opening up the school for a pre-K slash elementary school. But I'll let the superintendent take it from here and touch on any topics that I missed.
So, yes, as was stated, I know I mentioned in the spring and we had several different classroom moves because of our continual space constraints. So, those were the short-term solutions that we were presenting back then, which were approved by this committee. But at this point, we are looking for a long-term solution. So, as I had mentioned, we were gonna come with several different options. This is one of those options. I know there have been other options floated that, you know, we could potentially look into, but I know also have, you know, there's pros and cons of any alternative that we could provide. One of the things that we have looked into is there was some discussion about if it could just be a pre-K center. However, in looking at our current enrollment, it would need to be a pre-K slash elementary school. So, it would have to house pre-K to grade five in order to really resolve many of our space constraints. So, it certainly is an option. I'm happy to bring other options, but this one would be the one that is least disruptive to, it's the most expensive, but potentially the least disruptive to our community as other options would obviously require grade reconfiguration, school reconfigurations. And so, before we start to, you know, do a full analysis of how schools could potentially change over time, we did want to see if this might be an option. We want to entertain first before considering how we would change our current space in order to fit our current population and our growing population.
Before any questions? Ken, can you just give an update far as when the city did do that analysis for the Howard School and where we are and your expertise on what it will take?
So, back in 2012, 2013, they were talking about an increase in enrollment as well. So, I was asked to engage an architect and engineers to go in and do a study on bringing the Howard School back to life. So, we did do that in 2013. It was a non-destructive test, meaning they didn't open up any walls, they didn't do any kind of penetrations, but they did a complete analysis of the systems. We had an electrical engineer, a mechanical engineer, plumbing engineer, and an architect. And they put together a pretty comprehensive package and it's available to anybody that wants to see it. And they had a budget estimate of approximately 5 million at that time. So, I've since contacted the architect and asked him if there was any chance that they could basically take that same report and put current day dollars on it, just to see where we are now versus, again, 12 years ago, to give us a better idea. We've talked about it and one of the upsides to it, obviously, is depending on the cost, you weigh that versus what would it cost to build a school like that? If you could bring it back to life for, you know, if it's 10 million dollars. It's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but compared to having to build a new school. So, it's certainly something we want to pursue and I am working with the architect to get that information.
Thank you. Just another point, when we did the renovation, when we were looking at the Huntington, you know, we had a price tag about 30 to 40 million to do a total renovation. And what was the total cost that we spent? I mean, I know some of the members, I mean, I toured it prior to the in-house renovations that we did. What was the total cost?
We did it in-house, so to have an actual hard cost, I couldn't give you that. But again, all of it was done in-house with our own forces, you know, the cost of materials, but it was substantially less than what it costs, obviously, to go outside.
And this is something that we would do as well with the Howard School, doing a lot of stuff.
We would do some of it, there's a, there's a lot more work to be done at the Howard School to bring it back to life. So, we would do some of it and try and contain some of the cost, but it's gonna cost some money because it's a major renovation versus what we did at the Huntington.
All right, thank you. Open up the floor for the questions. Mrs. Azak followed by Mrs. Oliver and Mr. Gomes, and we'll go right down the line.
How's that?
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. So, I just have a couple of questions, bear with me. So, I've been on the committee, last time this came before us is, I was told the Howard School was total disrepair, it's, it's not worth fixing. To bring that back on, a couple of concerns I have is it's on a very busy street, parking is very limited. I would rather see us bring the Shaw School back on. Shaw School's over in Ward Five. You have, you're not on a busy street, it's tucked away a little bit off of North Quincy. And there's a lot of parking in the back. And I believe at one point, under Mr. Thomas's administration, we had talked about doing the metal building, which would have been a little more cost-effective rather than investing into these older buildings where, I know the police and the fire use the old Howard School for training. It's just, I drive by there all the time, I don't know where we would put the parking. You only have that wraparound driveway, but where would the parking be?
There's parking in the back of the school as well.
Okay, maybe because there's so much stuff back there, it just, it didn't, yeah. I just, I personally would, would rather support bringing maybe both of them back and seeing which one would be less expensive or just look at both of them if we're gonna be bringing one back on, or requesting to bring the Howard School back to the school department.
The Shaw School, I believe, is redic, so they're gonna be tearing that down.
It's not, probably everybody hasn't realized that, but that school's been condemned?
Definitely, and I thought the Howard School was condemned too, so, okay. That's why, that's why I was surprised when I saw this. I thought the Howard School, last time we talked about it, it just, it wasn't worth investing that kind of money into the school. It was better just to put the prefab buildings, the metal buildings. So, that's, that was my only concern, is I'd rather see the dollar amount as to what it's gonna cost us.
There was talk about taking the Shaw School down and putting a metal building there, you're right.
Yeah, there was, because there's so much land back there, so much land, they have space to play. I just, I'm sure we can use the Howard School for something else, it's just, there isn't even a playground over there to have that as an elementary school. They're really, I can't see having the kids play right on this main road. I would rather, personally, I would rather see a different location, have us look into that rather than the Shaw, the Howard School. And then, I mean, if it was 5 million back in 2013, I can only imagine what it would cost now in 2025. So, I would definitely like to see the numbers to be able to support that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Not only the, like, the structure studies, if we can also do the air quality, knowing that they've been using it as a training for school in there?
That would be part of it. They'll do a complete environmental testing, asbestos, everything, so that would be part of a restudy and any kind of work would be done would include that as well.
Perfect, and also traffic, if the city can do a study, because that is a busy area. And I know that accident happens all the time over there. So, definitely, if we can figure out, like, how many accidents has been within the last few years and how we are going to manage that area, because it's a busy traffic. And I know that just for safety, our students walking, you know, from, you know, to the school, I want to make sure they're safe at all times, but that is a really, really busy area. Especially with the dispensary not too far from there also, just to make sure we're managing safety at all times.
I'm thinking that's probably something Old Colony Planning could do far as a traffic study.
That would be great, especially with the dispensary with so many outside of Brockton coming to that area. I just want to make sure when they're walking that our kids are safe. Definitely, we'll need more police, school police to make sure that area for a while is very watched and that we're keeping everybody safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Vega?
So, this is relatively new for me, you know, I know, I'm one of the new members who wasn't a part of the last conversation. How many students are we thinking this will accommodate?
That I don't know.
Sorry, I don't, I know.
Okay, yeah, and so, and with that, like, you know, when we talk about this, like, you know, we're obviously in negotiations, we've got, so considerations like how do we staff it? What's the transportation plan for it are the things that kinda come to mind? Yeah, if you hear the hesitation in my voice, you know.
I think all that comes after we make a determination of the viability of the building itself.
Right. Do you have, do you have any sense of like, what sort of, like, what are the top-of-mind items that need to be done in this, in this building?
I mean, it's plumbing, it's electric.
It's everything.
Pretty much almost gutting it.
Okay.
But the structure itself, the bones of it, for lack of a better description, it's still a well-structured building.
And I, and I love the fact that with the Huntington, like, we use all in-house, our masons, our crew, like, if we were to dedicate them to a project like this, what does that mean for the other locations that are looking for work to be done, renovations to be done? I'm being greedy again and saying, I know of, like, West and Hancock needs that need to be done, so if we pour, if we push them towards, you know.
I'll be a little greedy, maybe they'll add some staff to the facility.
Well, please. All right, so, but I'm hearing it's like, you know, there's a lot to be figured out. But it goes without saying that this is, I love the idea of expanding our pre-K program. I think the only way we're gonna turn around BPS is at our earliest age, is making sure they're ready and good to go. I am very concerned about the idea of launching a new school at this time, you know, but, but I'll be very excited to see a feasibility study. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Gomes?
Thank you. I feel like we all have the same concerns. I like the fact that we're looking for solutions. We have been talking about, you know, expanding the pre-K. Vice chair had brought it to our attention when we first joined the committee. We've been talking about it. Similar concerns to some of my colleagues, one is the traffic. Two, I was gonna ask, we have to probably reroute our buses and whatnot. Not that it's impossible to do, of course. And the other piece is similar to what Joyce was saying, 5 million 2013 or so compared to now, plus, I don't know if the changes that were taking place, because the building, after all, has been sitting there, you know, the changes probably have not been immutable. So, more things gonna require work as well. And the other piece is that was just an overall, like, bringing it up to compliance and we're not sure what else needs to be done, correct?
Well, as far as their analysis, they did a complete structural and electrical, whatever. So, that was pretty accurate from their taking. Beyond that, I mean, you're talking other things, you know, that you want to do after the fact. But again, I just go back to the original point. Get that number and then make a determination, besides the traffic, what's it gonna cost to renovate it versus what would it cost to find a facility like that? So, I mean, that's gonna be the final, really, the numbers to look at?
Yes, that, that was my next point, is let's look at the numbers, see what is, what it comes out to and what we can accommodate and whatnot. And if there is a better solution or if this is the ultimate solution, then we can move from there.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All set? Ms. Sullivan?
For those that remember, it did used to be a preschool center, the Howard School. And, Mr. Thompson, I think you were here when it was. So, do we know the reason why it was closed then?
Is that when they moved to, they moved it out to the?
To the Gilmore?
I can't remember the name.
Gilmore, Barrett?
Didn't they go to the Gilmore first and then the Barrett?
They went to the Gilmore and then the Barrett.
Yeah. So, do we know the reason why it was closed and never used again?
No.
No? Does it have an elevator? No elevators.
In the addition, if you look at the building off to the left, there's a two-story addition, there's an elevator there, but not, it's all one level and a basement on the, on the majority of the building.
Okay, because that would require another with the elevator. Yep, thank you.
Before, I, I just want to say I toured the building twice. I'm not a structural engineer or architect, but when I, and any member can coordinate with Ken and to-
with Ken and take a tour and see it for yourself. Before we say, oh, the building's destroyed, the police, it's not what you imagine it to be. I know, like, the air quality, that's all going to be done, but the, there is a playground off to the right-hand side, so just take the time to go there and see it before you make a determination on it. The one piece that, is that that property is actually on the list for the city to liquidate. And if we don't take action on it, then we don't have an opportunity to reopen the school and the city does not have the money to build a new school. So we will be doing a disservice of not moving forward to address the needs of the district by not taking this action up. Mrs. Azak, the force yours.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Thompson, when we looked into the Shaw School, that was just a couple of years ago, I believe, that information's probably still up to date. I'd love to compare the two and just get it, because if the city is going to, if that building's scheduled to be torn down anyways, it might just be easier to put up the prefab, beautiful, two-floor building. We had seen plans, I think it was like two, three years ago, it was presented to the committee when we were looking into, and I get it, I want the full, the pre-K, we need the pre-K, but I just want to stop investing in some of the older buildings and get them the newer buildings that might need less work, might be more efficient, rather than trying to rehab some of the older buildings. It's just the location of that one, just being on such a main street, and that's borderline my ward, but it just, I just, having the young kids there and, I, trust me, I drive by it all the time, just even having that playground in the front off, it's still a main street. It's, the Shaw School, where that location is, is tucked away a little bit, and you have so much space back there. So again, if that's up there and that's going to be on the list, I would really prefer to look at both of them and weigh it in. But we also don't, like, you know, the Vice Chair said, we don't want to lose out on something. But I think the committee, that some of them that are not as familiar, maybe we can go take a look at both locations as part of the facilities and just tour them both. Because I was always under the impression, Howard School, oh no, that's, and that's what was presented to us years ago, and that's what I'm going by. So I'd like to look at both of them, but if it's time-sensitive, if one of you can let us know when a decision needs to be made?
I mean, again, we have to, and the Vice Chair knows, the city is trying to move on liquidating that building, so we're up against that. I don't know the exact process now, but it's imminent, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Can we look at the record, like, when it was open, how many students went there? So it'll give us kind of an idea of like, because it's the same number probably that got moved to Barrett or Gilmore, so if we can have that number, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you need a?
Mr. Gomes?
Or?
Yes, or whatever the will or the body of the committee is. Reason why this is added to the agenda is that, you know, if some of you follow what's going on within the city is financially, we don't want to sit here as a board and lose the opportunity to open a school, which is for the students. And the city does try to liquidate it because they see that there is not a need for the school district. And that's the superintendent and her team and Ken to address how those students will be moved, and we've discussed this prior to, on the body of increasing our pre-K as the numbers continue to increase, and we all see how the city is increasing with numbers. So it's at the will of the committee.
Before we, Vice Chair, before we make a motion, Dr. T, what's your take on the potential and possibilities with the building?
So I feel like I don't have all of the contextual knowledge and historical knowledge that you all do, because I'd actually heard the opposite. I'd heard that we had the Shaw School, but that that one was going to be more expensive than the Howard. So all I will say is that I know in my previous district, we, when our enrollment was going down, they sold a building that was then rehabbed by someone else, and then we rented it from them when our enrollment went back up. And that was incredibly painful to pay that rent. And so all I would say is that when you do have these spaces, it's just important to look, because I'm going to present the enrollment at our next presentation, and there has been a dip for reasons that we do understand, but political climates change, many things change, and in an urban center, we see that the overall trend is increases in student populations over time. And so I'm just always wary about when you have a space to be able to preserve it. So I don't feel like I can speak specifically to these instances or these particular buildings, but I do think it's important to make sure that, you know, we have all the space that we need for students before we have to, you know, rent it back from somebody else.
Force, yours.
I think, I mean, requesting the building back doesn't mean we're going to spend all that amount of money, you know, restructuring, fixing everything, but having it, I think, at least gives us the option if we do a cost analysis and whatnot. So I make a motion to request that the Howard School, 837 or Main Street, be returned to the Brockton School Department District.
Second?
On the motion, Mr. Vega.
So I am not against supporting our expansion of pre-K, but until we know how many students are going to be served, until we know what kind of, and I recognize that, you know, there's a chicken and egg kind of thing, but what we're talking about is the idea of, like, doing a feasibility study on the building itself to figure out the cost. What I'm talking about is doing a feasibility study on the actual need, you know, so before we pay whatever it's going to be for a feasibility study, I think we should have a very concrete understanding of what need we're addressing, you know, like, how much space we're going to, like, and we can surmise those things, not well before, we can surmise those things well before figuring out the cost of the building, based on the data that we already have about our enrollment. So again, I'm not at all trying to hold up the enrollment piece or the pre-K need, but I think for me to vote affirmative on this, I would need a lot more data, data that I think we can put together, but I couldn't vote yes on this otherwise.
Ms. Azak?
Thank you. I echo some of what Mr. Vega is saying also, it's just, but we're just only requesting the city to give us back the Howard School, and then we're going to do our study. Before we even do a feasibility, there's got to be basic info that we can bring back to the committee on how many students will it hold, you know, busing, things like that, things before we actually invest a lot of money into a feasibility study. So I'm comfortable, you know, voting and supporting this as long as, you know, once we have that information. Again, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. This is probably sometime in 2026, that we will have, hopefully, early '26 if this moves forward. So it's only just requesting, just clarification, just requesting that the city, we get the Howard School back from the city. Then that'll give Mr. Thompson and his crew enough time, and then the superintendent enough time to be able to get us more information, to see if it is something that is worth moving forward with or looking at another alternative location. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that prop, there is not one school in the, in the district that holds less than 500, so you know there's going to be a minimum of 500 students in there, so. On the motion, Mr. Vega, you're still, the force still yours.
Just clarifying question. What is the timeframe? I mean, like, I, like, what is the timeframe in terms of our need to say, hey, we want to hold on to this? Does, what's the expiration date? When do we lose it? When is it liquidated? Do we have a sense of that?
I don't know of a specific date if they've actually gone out with an RFP or not that with the procurement office. We may be able to find that out.
Okay. I mean, so again, there's just too many, I don't mean, you know, there's just too many questions that we have. Right now, we have more questions than answers, and so it's really difficult for me to imagine, even if it's, you know, hey, just hold on to this for us, because if it turns out that we don't need it, right, then there's an opportunity for Brockton to gain revenue, right? So, so I just, I just want to put that out there. It's difficult for me to support a vote tonight without having answers to really basic questions.
Mr. Gomes?
Oh, I was going to share. I have a note here from last year, I believe, and recently I visited Arno and Baker and did a few tours, and I met with some of the teachers from our schools. And one of the things that a few of them did bring up to me is that they would love to see more pre-K classes and space. And I was like, why don't we have in the, what they mentioned was space, we don't have space, we need more support and whatnot. And I did mention to them that that's one of the things we're looking at. The Vice Chair brought it up to us when I, I recall this when we joined the committee, that the numbers are going up for pre-K, the demand is going up, and we have to start looking at some solutions. Not saying that we're going to do anything about the building, but it doesn't hurt to keep it there, just in case. And as far as demand, I don't have the numbers, I don't have the logistics, but I wrote it down on my note. It was when I first joined the committee, I was like, let me take notes, people want to see this, we owe to deliver. That's what I was just looking at, and I was like, let me remind myself. So I'm a yes for this. If it happens that we have a better option, we don't need the building, so be it, we can give it back to the city, or if in the future we need to do something else with it, we might as well, so.
Just, are you all set? Are you all set, Mr. Gomes?
All set, thank you.
Just a point of information, there is an RFP that's drafted up for the city to liquidate certain properties, and that's unfortunately at schools. So I don't want this opportunity to slip, and we're not servicing a growing population of our students moving forward. So if it's financially not there, then we, the superintendent just goes to the drawing board, but this is where we are right now. So motion was made by Mr. Gomes, properly seconded by Mrs. Oliver. I will do a roll call vote on this. Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, it passes. Thank you. Next agenda item is a presentation from the facilities director on district by facility update, you know, as far as projects, needs, and next steps, and anything that's going on in the district.
We're going to be in the process of putting a capital plan together, which is going to spell out pretty much everything in the district that we're looking to address in an order of priority. Schools with, that need boilers, with chiller issues and things like that, so, you know, we'll have that in ready, it'll take a little bit of time, but we'll have that presentation.
Thank you. Any ongoing projects? I know I've been hounding you with the basketball courts at the Davis.
We're well underway with the basketball at the Davis School. We did some work over the summer, I think the superintendent shared that with you, the work we did at the Raymond School. We're doing, I mean, we're constantly doing projects, some big, some small, and Jamie will attest to it, it's work orders every day, so there's just a lot going on around the district. I always say the schools are old, so there's always a lot to do, but we do have specific projects. We get the summer to do our big projects like we did at the Raymond, so, but during the course of the year, it's smaller projects, but we're going to be doing another ISC for Principal McCaskill and things like that, which we can do in the evening. So there's just a lot going on.
Thank you. Any questions from the members? Mrs. Oliver, followed by Ms. Azak.
I think there was some issue with the boiler, right, at the Barrett? Did we get that fixed? Was it Barrett?
We did, yeah, but that's another one. That's a school with one boiler, so we're identifying the schools that just have one boiler, they should have two, so that's going to be part of the priority.
And we have, how old are they, just to make sure they're sustained, the winter month coming up?
We maintain them, I mean, again, talking about the facilities crew, I mean, we maintain them, and that's why they're still running, and they're in the shape they are. Some of them are newer and been replaced 15 years ago, so they're not original to the building. But again, it's a lot of maintenance, we do it, we pay close attention to it, and so I think we're getting into the, going into the winter season, we do our prep work again, so we should be in good shape, but it's, you know, it's time, again, we talk about the turf field, it's time for additional boiler work, some chiller work and things like that.
Thank you.
Ms. Azak?
Thank you. So, Mr. Thompson, I'd love to, if we can coordinate a meeting and just sit down with the city and figure out what needs to be done over at Brookfield. I know your staff has been amazing, the city has been amazing when we have flooding over there, but it's, it's, we have like waterfront sometimes, and I keep, you know, every time I look into it, we need to bring the city in, supposedly there's work or something. I want clarification as to what needs to be done. Recently, someone said to me, more work needed to be done underground to help with the drainage. So, you know, if we can coordinate a meeting, I would like to just get that, because the constant water that sits there, that cannot be helping out the foundation. So I really, you know, and I feel bad, but it's just, I know we've tried, the facilities has always been amazing, and, you know, we call them, they're out there, but I need, I need help from the city. We need to get out there and actually see what needs to be done, because it's not helping our parking lots, it's not helping our grounds with the water retention. But I mean, if we can coordinate it, maybe, you know, involve the superintendent, just so we can just have a meeting of the minds and get this, like, taken care of, see what we need from the city, and maybe reach out to some of our state reps if we need some type of funding and things like that. So, Vice Chair, I'm not understanding, is this amusing?
No, I, when you mentioned about the flooding, I remember the picture that you had sent a couple of years ago, and there was, I thought, I'm like, when did the Brookfield get a pond? Because there was ducks.
I mean, they had fun with it, our, you know, the little ones would float ducks, and there was real ducks, and there was rubber ducks and floaties, and, but it's just, we almost had to close our school down for a day if your staff didn't go in there with the sump pumps and the sandbags. So it's been going on for far too long, but I hate to put you on the spot on camera, but I really think it's time that we sit down with the city and just see what do we need to do over there, because the last time we had the water, it was, it was a lot. And we just can't afford to have our kids miss, you know, education, time for education, because we have water coming into my building. So if we can work on that, you know, whatever you need from me, just let me know, and we'll sit down with DPW, I'm sure they're all watching, and, but hey, Brookfield's one of my priorities, so I got to get that taken care of.
And we have been working with DPW, and they have been, and in fact, it was DPW who had the sump pumps out there, not us.
Oh, good, okay, yeah.
They're aware of it, and they've made several efforts, and they've done some work there. I've talked to Commissioner Hill, he's aware of it, and I'll circle back with him and have another conversation with him, and maybe it's a bigger project and he's going to have to.
Someone mentioned recently, like, some work wasn't completed underground, so, and that came from, you know, I'll talk to you off camera, but whatever needs to be done, we just, the amount of water that retains there, and it's just, same with the wintertime, they can't cross, you know, some of the classrooms, you have to go outside and cross, even in the summertime, so, but yeah, definitely, I'd love to be part of that meeting, just so we can get that resolved.
Absolutely, and they're more than willing to work with us.
But we appreciate everything. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. When we called them, they were out there, they had the sump pumps going, it was top priority, and I appreciate everyone's efforts, but it's like, we got to get to the, see what is going on underground and see what we need to do. But I appreciate every time.
I'll speak with Commissioner Hill, and we'll get a meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Thompson? See, and I think you can.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is our legal counsel attorney, Peter Mello, will give us an update relative to the ongoing process regarding the Keith Field and the Boys and Girls Club of Metro South. Peter, you could sit right, yeah, you could sit right there, you don't need to come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Good to see everyone.
Hello.
Hi. So in September, following our site visit at the property, we received a copy of a proposed plan depicting the easement location, which we circulated to you all, I think you've all received that. Following our receipt of the proposed plan, we coordinated a meeting among officials from BPS, the club, and the city, which we held last week. At the meeting, we discussed a few, a few different topics, namely, the city's submission to the Land Court of an application to deregister the property, the whole parcel, including the carve-out and the Keith Field proper, which remains under the committee's control, is registered land, and it's, it's kind of a mundane legal distinction, but some, the way properties sort of catalogued in the state differs depending on whether land's recorded or registered. Land that's registered is subject to a more onerous Land Court process, where recorded Land that's registered is subject to a more onerous land court process, where recorded land can be more freely, transactions associated with recorded land can be more freely sort of carried out. So the city submitted an application to the land court to deregister the land, and make it, basically make it recorded land, which is a relatively new process. I've since the meeting conferred with a colleague from my office on that issue, and I'm pretty comfortable that it's, that it's an innocuous, basically procedural step, that doesn't really, I don't think compromise the school department's interests in any, you know, material way, so. So we talked about that, we talked about the location of the easement, and there were some questions about where it was, and whether, you know, whether the line should be reconfigured at all, and so we had a good discussion about that, and I think emerged from that meeting with an understanding of where the easement is proposed to be located. And we also talked about the creation of a proposed special act, the property's the subject of a special act of the legislature, effectively a statute that was adopted by the legislature in 1920, and invests control over the property with the school committee, so insofar as this arrangement would, would provide an easement over a property that's the subject of the special act, everyone I think is endeavoring to create a proposed amendment, amended special act that we would submit to the legislature, and we talked a little bit about that, and potential terms of that, and are in the process of working with counsel from the city and from the club on that document, so that's kind of where things stand, happy to take questions, but that's where we are.
Thank you. I'll open up the floor to members for any questions. Mr. Gomes, followed by Mrs. Oliver, then Mr. Vega.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for checking in on the deregistering process. I was a little bit concerned, because it felt like something that we should be doing on our side, to then give out the carve-out piece.
Yeah, and so, and so, my understanding is that it's maybe a fine distinction, that maybe there was a belief that title issues were, because municipalities, property ownership is, with respect to school property, is nuanced, because you technically, the city is the kind of the main, the overall organism, and the schools, the statutes are pretty clear that the school committee maintains and controls school property, in this case, there's an extra layer of a special act that confers that authority with the school committee, but I think there might have been a sense that this was a title issue that was, you know, not subject to the committee's, you know, review, or maybe there was confusion about what sort of approval, I don't know, I can't really speak to that, but rest assured that after the meeting, I confer with a colleague who's more, this transactional real estate matters are more within his bailiwick, and I think we're comfortable that, that it's, it doesn't really compromise the school department's interests at all, this deregistration, and in fact, I think his thought was it was, it was better, and he himself actually has worked with clients to make the same application. I think there's a notion that the registration process is a little antiquated and clunky, and it can be onerous to do anything with property that's registered, so I think if that weren't the case, we would obviously advise the committee accordingly.
And then how, how far are we, or where are we at with the special act?
That's in the process of being developed, and I guess I see it as a way to address, you know, issues, any issues associated with the transaction, and have reached out to council in the process of working on a draft, so that's hopefully something we can, we can complete, you know, in the near future, and.
Do we have a timeline for that?
Well, it depends, I guess, on, because I think, I envision all interested parties being involved, you know, the city solicitor's office, city council has council, I think it would make sense for them to review as well, and of course, the club's council, and our office, so, you know, hopefully we could do it readily. I would say, you know, we'll circulate a draft soon, perhaps in the next week or two, and then from there, it's kind of, you know, just depends on when we get feedback, and what, what types of changes are proposed and all that. That's kind of the timing I envision.
And what's your recommendation as to this body, as far as next steps, and?
Well, I think the key is to, at this point, from my perspective, the key is to formulate a draft special act that everyone's comfortable with. That's really the major next step, as I see it. So, I mean, obviously, there are moving parts to all this, there are different things that happen, have to happen with respect to the transaction. The land court process is pending, so, and I don't know where that stands, if there's anything to be done in connection with that, but I think really the main, the main task at the moment is to complete a draft special act, and then what I would envision is, once that's completed, bringing that to the subcommittee, and ultimately to the committee, and, you know, you know, taking the matter up then. And in the meantime, obviously, I'm happy to provide any updates and any other information the committee wants.
Thank you, awesome.
Ms. Oliver, please, yours.
By any chance, who ordered the deregister?
So I, I don't know the exact genesis of it, I, at the meeting, it's, one of the city's attorneys mentioned that they had filed this application, and again, I, if, I don't want to make too much of that issue, because if I, if, if we felt like it jeopardized the committee's interests, rest assured, we would, we would address that.
But you didn't find out till the meeting, right, that that was done?
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't involved in the filing of the application, and wasn't, I didn't get copied on the filing until after the meeting.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking is, is just to, again, right, we have our attorney there, yourself, to represent the school committee, and also our students, for the best interest, right? And the fact that certain things are being done behind our backs, and not, like, even talking to us about it, it's very, like, dishonest, and it's very worrisome that this continues to happen, and I do appreciate all the hard work you've been doing, and all the nonsense you've been having to deal with on your part, it's just the fact that the community needs to know that this is the thing that gets myself very irritated, as a rep for Ward Three, and also for every student in the city, when things constantly is being done behind our back, and it's, again, it's accountability and transparency. Like, for something to be done that, even though it's not gonna harm us, right, it's just the moral of it, right? It's just the fact that it was done, almost like possibility of harming us, but I'm glad that you looked into it, that it will not affect us in any way, it's just, again, the fact that things like this continue to happen, and as all adults, and we need to be respectful, and hold each other accountable for nonsense that continue to happen, and we're the last to know about, and that's what concerns me, how this is moving forward, and I just want whoever did it, and what, if it was spiteful, if it was any other way, just let the community know that you're doing this, so we don't be surprised with things, and I truly appreciate all the work you're doing, just to represent us and the students of the city.
Yeah, thank you, and I want to be careful, though, I understand, you know, frustration, but I, I'm not, I think that the, there might have been a sense that we had already carved out the property, I just don't want to attribute any, you know, ill intent to anybody, I think, you know, property transactions can take on kind of a routine nature, and I don't think, I've highly doubt that there was any intent by anyone to deprive the committee of any rights here, I do want to be clear about that, I find that hard to believe, I think it probably was just a formal step that had to be taken in connection with, you know, a legal transaction. The intent, obviously, ultimately, is to subdivide the carved-out piece of property from the remaining portion over which the school committee maintains control, so I think it was probably just a, you know, a part of a formal process that, you know, wasn't really the subject of a ton of thought, and this, in terms of like the distinction between the school committee and the city, and their rights with respect to title issues, I just want to, I.
I get it, definitely, just, I just think it's just courtesy and respect, right? And I think that just, we should have known about it, that that was gonna happen. That's all I'm asking, just basically, just the courtesy to let us know the whole process, and not do things that we don't know about until the last minute.
Thank you. Mr. Vega, followed by Ms. Azak.
Thank you for taking the time to be here, Mr. Mello. I just want to start off by saying, there's been some very interesting rumors out there about why I'm so hot on getting the Boys and Girls Club done. I want to explain why. We, the Boys and Girls Club provides a number of things to our students and our families, including after-school childcare, including after-school programming, including a myriad of tools that not just our students benefit from, but their parents who sometimes work two or more jobs. Currently, they are on a waitlist, an indefinite waitlist. Currently, students who are enrolled and getting the benefits of Boys and Girls Club aren't able to access the extended benefits that would happen with the expansion that's being proposed. This is a project that I think came to the school committee well before I arrived, and I've just been kind of confused about why we can't move through on some things. So the question I have, so we mentioned that deregistering is an innocuous, pretty innocuous process, do we have a timeframe around what that would look like?
I haven't been involved in it, so I don't, and again, this is property, real estate transactional work is, it's not something I deal with a ton, but I, one of the attorneys for the city at the meeting, I think, said that he anticipated it'd be about a 30-day process, so.
That is pretty fast.
That's subject to the court's schedule. My understanding from my colleague is that when they rolled out this new program, there was sort of a backlog, because there was so much participation, so many parties sought to deregister their property, that the court was sort of backlogged, and that that's subsided a bit at this point, so I don't know.
And the same question around the special acts, like, first, like, who's responsible for making the amendments to the special acts, and how long of a process would that take?
Yeah, so that's a good question, I think ultimately, the council, the city council would need to vote on the terms of a special act to be submitted to the legislature. That, the timing of that process is completely unpredictable, and outside of our control. I've seen special acts get streamlined, I've seen some drag out for a pretty protracted period, I can't really predict that, but I would be surprised if, if the process could be completed from approval through submission to the legislature, and through approval by the legislature before the spring, but I, it's hard to predict that.
All right. And, you know, as we look at all of this, right, what, can you explain to me what the scenario, like, it's possible for us to have a vote to release the easement without having the special acts in place, is that a possibility?
Well, I, so my advice is, at least at this juncture, to address everything globally in a special act, rather than piecemealing it. I think that ultimately, before the property is formally subdivided, it's also a little bit, I guess, to me, anomalous to formally, you know, effectuate committee action on an easement covering property that hasn't been officially subdivided. I think there, as I mentioned, there are moving parts to this, that I just feel like the cleaner approach right now is to try to address everything in sort of an omnibus fashion in the special act. Obviously, the, the action has to be ultimately approved by the committee, as opposed to the subcommittee, but I think, from my perspective, it's cleaner and more advisable to establish some comfort with the terms of the special act, and then decide what formal action the committee needs to take at that point.
And I appreciate that. I'll just say again, so I joined last year, I had the first presentation in December of 2024, we're approaching that anniversary relatively soon, we've made, you know, we had plans then, and so we're kind of in the same scenario, we have plans now, and a new set of, you know, things to get through. By the time the special acts piece is gone, I think it's safe to say we're saying spring, this committee may not be the same. The city council may not be the same. The mayor's office may not be, well, won't be the same, and we'll be doing this all over again. This has been a five-year process to do right by our kids. I can't stress this enough, this isn't about the Boys and Girls Club, this is about the fact that our families count on the Boys and Girls Club. So if there's a world where, you know, and I appreciate what Ms. Oliver said, you know, there are some things that should have been done in the light of day, there's some respect things that could have been done between us and our colleagues on the city council, but at the end of the day, our kids matter more than that, and we've been doing this, is it fair to say five years?
Started in 2019.
Multiple iterations of school committees, and every time the school committee changes, every time the city council changes, we're back at square one or square two, when we need to be at 10 and done. So I'm gonna say, if there's a world where we can move this forward, and work with our colleagues on city council to simultaneously get the special acts, I think we should vote to release the easement to the Boys and Girls Club. It's been a year now. Like, I started off as a novice, not understanding this, I understand it thoroughly, and I still don't understand why we're telling parents to stay on a waitlist. Sorry, we can't get your kid into this program. I know you need childcare, I know it's available at Boys and Girls Club, I know they do a great job, sucks to be you. That's the end of my argument.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Do we have any more comments? Because we're running out of time.
Okay, I'll make it really quick.
Ms. Azak?
Thank you, Attorney Mello. I understand the frustration with some members, but this is what our legal counsel is advising us, this is why we pay the legal counsel to look out for our best interest. For those that are not familiar, once you relinquish your, your rights in granting easement, we lose full control of that easement. We lose full control, and we didn't have the issues with the culvert from day one, the culvert came into light with, a few months ago, correct? So we didn't have the culvert to deal with, and then COVID, so it really hasn't been a full five years, because we dealt with COVID, and then we didn't hear anything for the whole year of 2024. For those that are watching, it hasn't, it's not like we had consecutive meetings. I get the frustration, I don't think any of us are against this, I just, if we can do it the right way, and just move, move things along, so the next step, what would we need to do as a committee, what the next step is, and where do we move forward?
Yeah, so I think the next step is to formulate a proposed special act that all interested parties are comfortable with, and I think once, once that happens, again, as I see it, it's, it's an opportunity to address all of the moving parts, you know, in omnibus fashion, and once that step is taken care of, I think things should come into focus, and the formal votes that the committee has to take will kind of take shape and can be undertaken.
Thank you, that, just, just to close this off with time, are you all set, Ms. Azak?
Definitely, it just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to close off, this, we're gonna end it right here, is, as a member of the Boys and Girls Club when it first opened in the 90s, where I met numerous people, there is not one person that is sitting in office or running for office that is against this, so that little, small group of elected officials and those that are running are saying that people are trying to stop this project, you need to stop, because it's kind of embarrassing, you know? I'm not taking in donations from any builders. You know, I'm not taking in donations from any builders or members of the Boys and Girls Club. So with that being said, our attorneys are actively working regardless of whatever body changes, it's going to move forward. That's just, just what it is. And when we talk about why it takes so long, in 2019, Tom Minicello was the chair, vice chair. Following that, Mr. DiAgostino was the vice chair for two years. Mrs. Azak was the chair. Kathy Ellis was the chair. We went into that kibaka with ties. Then look at the chairman of the facilities. Mr. Sullivan chaired that facilities for three years while I was on this committee. Mrs. Azak, Kathy Ellis, Jared Homer. Tony Rodriguez is the one that's been moving this forward and working on that, hosting the meetings, putting them on the agenda. The project will happen, but the one piece was that you do not start at the D level. You have to do A, B, and C, and A, B, and C wasn't done. So that's what our legal counsel is doing to move this forward, and the project will happen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A point of privilege. Point of privilege. Let's, let's be clear about something. I will not have my integrity questioned.
We're discussing the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes. So when you talk about donations, sir, vice chair, vice chair, please.
Mr. Vega, I'm not arguing about that. We could talk about that.
You just did. But you just did, vice chair.
And I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
You took the conversation to a place it didn't need to go. We talk about respect amongst council. We talk about respect amongst the school committee. We show none amongst ourselves.
We're not doing this. We're not doing this right now, Mr.
We never do it. And that's the problem.
I'm not here for a show with charade because it's an election year. This is the process.
Sir, we've been having this concentration since I arrived.
Stop.
Please.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gomes, seconded by Ms. Azak. Show of hands. Adjourned. This is not a show.
If you wanted to sign in to speak, please, it's there. And then we're actually going to pull it as we always do, and we're going to start the meeting, okay? Members of the committee, we're going to start in about one minute, please.
Is BCA in the, oh, they're not there? All right, we'll give them, we'll give them a second.
Five, four, three, two, one. I hereby it being a little after seven o'clock, we're here at the Georgia M. Rom Little Theater Brockton High School, 474 St., Brockton, Mass. 2301. It's being Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. We do have a revised agenda. The only matter is the last, actually, the second or last agenda, Agenda 9 has been modified a bit. With that being said, I'm going to read into the record the following. Dear visitors, welcome to the meeting of the Brockton School Committee. This agenda, this is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note the hearing of visitors is included. If you have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary, and Mrs. Campbell has given me the list. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 8 and also the 1071 HD version and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. At this time, I would ask that we please stand and salute the American flag.
My allegiance
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to thank all of the guests that are with us tonight. Thank you very much for being here. I also just want the minutes to reflect that school committee member Tim Sullivan is under the weather. He texted me, he is unable to join us this evening. I will call the roll just to establish a quorum. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
I'm here as well. We've established a quorum, and of course, Priya Tahiliani, Assistant of Schools, is also our clerk for the school committee, and thank you for being here tonight. That concludes Agenda 1. Agenda 2 is the hearing of visitors pursuant to school committee policy. Each person requesting to speak shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Since this period is limited to 15 minutes, a total of five people should be permitted to speak on a first-come, first-served basis. Again, we do have individuals that have signed in. Exactly five individuals have signed in. The first one, and I apologize having a difficult, I broke my glasses today, but I'm a Brockton guy, so I'm not going to buy new ones, but they broke perfectly, if you can see. The first one is Ellen Boardman. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Ellen Boardman. I'm an English as a Second Language teacher at the Baker School. I'm here tonight speaking up for all of our education support professionals. In my role, I go into substantially separate classrooms every day. These are classrooms with our students of the highest needs. It is not a stretch to say these classrooms cannot run without these professionals. They get to know the students very well and find ways to motivate them and assist them. It's not an easy job. They're often subject to dysregulated students' behavior. This can involve getting slapped, scratched, or screamed at, which I have witnessed in the past week. As an ESL teacher, I use a lot of visuals with my students. So here I have what you are currently offering our BESPA members. There are about 500 of them, and you want to give each of them one quarter more per hour. This jar represents that amount. I'm here today to say they are worth more than that. One of the pairs in my building works three jobs. She shared with me that she may not be able to continue to pay her bills. The health insurance increase alone would be more than what you are offering as a total increase in pay for them. She's extremely dedicated and effective in what she does. Brockton cannot afford to lose these dedicated educators to other districts or professions altogether. As you enter mediation, I encourage you to think about the total wages and not percentages when dealing with this group of employees. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it says Mary Fahey Bedrow. I apologize if it doesn't. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not a speaker, but I'm very frustrated and tired of the rhetoric. Actions speak louder than words, and to me, your words have no meaning at all. You treat us like second-class citizens, but without us, you would have chaos in the classrooms. And all you're offering us is 2% raise, which is a slap on the face and an insult. We come to school day in and day out, and because, because we care and love these children, we come in with a smile every day, even if we have had a tough day the day before. Every day is a new day. Each and every one of us have gotten hurt through the years, but we are still working here because we support and love these children every day. If you had to come into our classrooms, if it was you, there's a teacher and three pairs in our classroom, if, you wouldn't be able to do our job without us in the classroom. If it were just you and three other staff had to do it, you wouldn't be able to do it. But I would never be able to do your job either.
Thank you. Adrienne Wish, please. Yeah, I, I can't read it, I'm sorry. Got old eyes, I apologize.
It's okay. I've had 14 years of teachers that all fractured my name. I'm Adrienne Wish. I'd been here at the high school for nine years. I've been in the system going on 30 years. And I'm looking, and when I got my first paycheck, I'm looking at it wondering why it's less than last year. So I started looking at all the I'm looking, I didn't, I thought I spoke loud enough without this thing. I'm looking at the deduction. So I'm talking dollars and cents now. I mean, you want to give us a raise of 2%. My health insurance, which I cannot be without because my husband is recovering from cancer, it went from $200 last year, $216. It is now $229.18. That's just health insurance. Then everything else went up a couple dollars. So it really adds up. I said, no, I've been in this system 29 years. My income's at a point where $30, I'm still getting a halfway decent paycheck, but I'm thinking of all the people here that have, I've only been here a couple years, and their paycheck is much smaller than mine, but they're still having that same $30 for health insurance pulled out. It really hurts. It makes a huge difference. So a 2% raise is just not covering the mustard. And all of us put up with kids that get disruptive in class. The teachers really couldn't survive without us in the classroom. So that's what I have to say. You really need to give us a livable wage to help cover. I mean, my health insurance, when I first started 29 years ago, was a fraction of what it is now. But none of us can survive without health insurance. If we wind up in the hospital, you could wind up losing your house. So that's all I have to say.
Billy DeCosta?
Good eve, good evening. I'm Billy DeCosta. I'm a power at Brockton Eye. I've spoken here before. Tonight, I want to talk about why we need this livable wage. Over the last 60 years or more, the cost of living has gone up astronomically high. We, not me, but a bunch of other powers are working two jobs or more. And, you know, here's the thing, if you're working two jobs because of this, what happens if you start having kids? You're not going to have time to raise them because you're working all these two jobs because you're not getting enough money. My point is, you know, I eventually want to move out of my parents' house, get, go, get a teaching degree, get my own special ed teaching degree, get, settle down with my girlfriend, but the, the wage we have now, I can't, I can't afford that. I mean, we need this, we need this livable wage so I can, you know, get on with, with the things I want to do in life, not just me, but everybody here too. That is all I can say for now.
Again, I, I apologize, but I think it says Donna, sort of, that signed in, Thornton, yeah? What's the last name? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Shearing. I come, and good evening to everyone. I stand before you as a citizen, a product of Brockton Public Schools, a parent, a taxpayer, and a paraprofessional who deeply loves this city, the people who reside here, and the students who walk the halls of these schools every day. Without going into great details, this past week, last week I had a couple of absences. I carry an extra duty. I was promptly pulled in for a I was promptly pulled in for a quote-unquote "conversation" that I was named by, I was singled out by name from another department that I was inconsistent. I was out three days because I have autoimmune disorders. I had that sick time. And subsequently told that if my inconsistencies were to continue, I would be removed from my duty. That's not fair. I cried myself to sleep. I was depressed for days. I give my heart and soul just like every single one of these professionals in here does. So to devalue what we are worth, because you cannot put a price on the love and respect that we have for the job, our colleagues, and the kids of this city, I implore you to do right, not only by your employees and your citizens, but your children, your future. According to the MTA, I encourage you, go to the MTA website and hit that calculator. A livable wage in Brockton is a minimum of $60,000. You would essentially have to double our pay. And I don't think we've asked for doubling our pay, but according to the MTA, that's where we should be. You should be doubling our pay. So we would have a livable wage, so people don't have to work two, three, four, and five jobs and be away from their families. I went straight to school, to my van, home long enough to stuff dinner in my face to come here, to stand up for all the other people that cannot be here tonight. It's shameful. And I fear that if we, that if we don't get a fair shake and a fair wage, the repercussions could be disastrous to the city if there was a mass exodus of paraprofessionals. So please, as you go into negotiations, keep that in mind. What would happen to this school system if you lost even 20% of your pairs, 30% of your pairs? What if you lost them all? Thank you for your time.
We want to thank the five speakers. That does conclude Agenda 2, Hearing of Visitors. We will go on to Agenda 3, which is the Report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with Item A, which is Teaching and Learning. And under that, we have my report, the Superintendent's Report alongside the enrollment and attendance update I'll be providing.
Did someone leave their phone at the podium?
Donna? Is this yours? It's pink? Pink?
Well, we only had five speakers.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to start this evening with an enrollment update, as we have recently submitted our October 1 numbers. Our enrollment for this school year is 14,914 as compared to last year's October 1 number when it was 15,280. So this is an overall decrease of 366 students. On this slide, you'll see a change from last year to this year in the individual grade levels. The biggest drops are visible at the kindergarten, third, seventh, eleventh, and twelfth grade levels. We are seeing an increase in pre-K, however, which I know is something I've mentioned before and something that we've discussed even here this evening. So we see that that trend is continuing. As an update on our enrollment numbers specifically for our English learners, we've also seen an overall decrease in our EL enrollment of 220 students district-wide compared to, again, this time last year. In addition to overall enrollment, our new enrollment for English learners dropped between July 1 and October. From July to October of 2024, so last year, we had 1,011 new enrollees, but for that same time period this year, July of 2025 to October of 2025, we had only 650 enrollees. So that demonstrates that the number of new English learners who were enrolling has drastically increased. So while the cumulative amount has only decreased a bit, this shows you sort of what our trend is over the summer. More specifically, our new enrollments for Haitian and Spanish-speaking students is down by half. Here's a look at the change of newly enrolled English learners, again, from last year to this year at individual grade levels, again. The biggest drops are visible at the kindergarten, third, seventh, eleventh, and twelfth grade levels, again. Again, the only grade level that saw even a modest increase was at the pre-K level. Also, I know that I have been asked about our attendance rates. So here's a look at our early attendance figures for the 25-26 school year. Overall, in grades 1 through 12, we're seeing 93.3% attendance. Our most consistent levels are coming in grades 1 through 7, which are all between 94% to 95%, while we're seeing lower rates in high school and pre-K to K. This is actually typical of our attendance rates. One thing that is important to note is that these rates could go up based on students who have not reported yet and we are still withdrawing. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does require that we follow up with students and that we make sure we know where their next landing place is before we remove them from our rolls. So once that happens, for those students who are no longer going to be with us this year, our attendance rates for even previously would be adjusted to reflect our actual attendance for those students who have been in our school district this year. So that's our enrollment and attendance, and I was going to move on to some highlights from our schools. So I want to congratulate all of the students in the Red House here at BHS who were invited to the first Honorable Assembly of the Year to recognize their achievements. Red House administrators Stephanie Landerholm and Gary Gayotow hosted an honors breakfast for students, and they stated that they are proud of the students' academic excellence and look forward to celebrating again at the end of Term 1. Also, the lighting upgrade project at BHS has gotten underway through our partnership with Ameresco and National Grid, and you may have noticed signage on your way in tonight highlighting that effort. I want to call out the BHS carpentry students who worked on installing that signage, which will be on display for the duration of the project. Also on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of a major grant for our district that will allow us to replace aging HVAC equipment at the Plough. Grants Director Cam Jackson recently attended a special event hosted by the MassClean Energy Center where BPS was awarded over $4 million in grant funding to support the replacement of existing HVAC systems with high-efficiency heat pump chillers and a new building management system at Plough. This project not only helps improve air quality and comfort for students and staff, but it also advances the district's long-term commitment to clean energy, climate resiliency, and sustainability. East Middle School will soon be partnering with MIT via the MIT C Grant, giving students the opportunity to do hands-on work building a marine drifter that will be deployed into the ocean to track ocean currents. The partnership goes hand-in-hand with the Amplify Science Unit that's part of our sixth grade curriculum and focuses on ocean currents. Once deployed, we'll be able to keep tabs on the drifter via MIT's website and see how the currents are affecting its movements through the ocean. Also at East, I wanted to highlight a special guest article written for a Cape Verdean publication by staff member Julio Carvalho. His article helped to spread the word back in Cape Verde about the culture of inclusivity at East Middle School, which was on full display when the school gathered students and staff together to watch the Cape Verdean soccer team defeat Cameroon to qualify for the World Cup for the first time. The event brought together not only students of Cape Verdean descent, but the whole East community in a celebration of the triumph for Cape Verde. Across town at West, the Wolverines have launched a new little free library outside of the school building thanks to the support from members of the Lambda, Kappa, Sigma, Chapter of the Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. The chapter contacted member Vega, who helped facilitate the installation of this great new feature, which will be stocked with books for students and members of the community to enjoy. West has long-term plans to install benches and landscaping around the library to help create a welcoming reading area for students and community alike. Each elementary school received 506 new books carefully curated by representatives from Follett. We asked them to prioritize titles that are culturally relevant, award-winning, and reflective of the many languages spoken across Brockton. As a result, our collections now include award-winning works authored in English, Spanish, Portuguese, French, Haitian Creole, and Vietnamese. These editions have been met with high praise from both students and teachers. One of the most moving moments came from a student from Guatemala who lit up with excitement upon finding a character, Juanita, in a book who was like her. The book was written in Spanish, and she could not wait to bring the book home to share with her mother, a powerful reminder of why representation matters. Oh, sorry. These are the books. I'd also like to introduce two individuals who will be joining BPS as Harvard Superintendent Fellows for the coming year, Karen Hillman and Hassan Ibrahim. Did I say that right? Ibrahim, okay. They're here with us tonight, who will be joining us as part of their doctoral program at Harvard's Graduate School of Education. During the first year of the program, students learn to become systems, levels, leaders by being partnered with a superintendent and partnering district in Massachusetts. Karen Hillman is an accomplished educational leader with a commitment to fostering exceptional learning environments. With over two decades of experience, Karen has served in pivotal roles including principal of Dedham Middle School, where she prioritized staff diversification and implementing sustainable systems for teacher leadership and collaboration. Prior to this, Karen contributed to school improvement and innovation through her work at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and in the nonprofit world. Her interest in pre-K to 12 education stems from a deep belief in creating equitable and enriching experiences for all students, a commitment demonstrated by her work leveraging student voice, enhancing school safety, and implementing professional development initiatives that have elevated school culture. She holds a Master's in Education from Harvard University. Hassan Ibrahim is an educator and expert in education system strategy. Hassan's belief in the potential that a high-quality education can ignite is rooted in his own immigrant family's commitment to learning. As a proud native of California, Hassan's first and favorite role in education was as a high school math teacher in his hometown of San Jose. Since then, he has held positions including at the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Education in Washington DC and at the US Department of Education. Most recently, Hassan worked with district and state leaders around the country as a consultant with Education Resource Strategies, a Massachusetts-based nonprofit. His work at ERS included working with district leaders in Detroit Public Schools to enable increased access to post-secondary opportunities, and in Albuquerque Public Schools to decide and design a need-driven school funding model. Hassan has a Master's in Public Policy from Harvard Kennedy School and a BS in Neuroscience from the University of Southern California. So we are very excited to welcome them to our Brockton school community. They will be with us for the entire school year. They've already started to go visit schools. And one thing I do just want to say is that last year, you may remember Dion Owens, he was our Harvard Fellow from last year, and now we have become so popular that we have two Harvard Fellows. So I am very excited that everyone is seeing how great we are doing here in Brockton.
Members, we'll just take a one-minute recess while people depart. Any questions for the superintendent relative to her presentation? Ms. Oliver, please.
Thank you. The only thing that I notice and extremely concerned is just the registration going down, right? The number of students, and I think it's just the state of the country we're in right now. A lot of people afraid to send their kids to school, and a lot of them are withdrawing, so that kind of basically brings the number down. I'm hoping things settle in about a year or so that we can get our numbers up. I know that I've been getting a lot of emails from concerned parents and some other questions from residents regarding, we already have in place exactly what to do if ICE comes to our school, right, to the door. But what they're asking mostly is what are we doing surrounding schools? And I did say to some people, we don't have the manpower, right? We don't have all the police, school police, to go to every school area to basically make sure all our kids are walking and they're safe, they're not being snatched off the street like what's happening around the country. But I just want to know what your opinion, what is the city is willing to help out to make sure our students are basically literally being kidnapped off the street? I know it's not happening here, but I know they're here. But just to basically see how we can work as a community to make sure our priority's always our kids, that they're safe, they don't feel scared to walk to school, and then, you know, the app and see is going to be really high.
I mean, I can speak to that. Who wants to change in the White House? Courtney Henderson, my Director of Immigration Services, has come up with protocols that mirror what Priya Tahiliani has told us. She's worked with Kelly Jones and the team on the school side as well. We also reached out to all the different pastors in the community. We've had face-to-face meetings. I meet with them every other Friday as well. So again, we've had meetings with Chief Perez. I want to make it clear, BPD is not working with ICE. I'm a Democratic mayor, even though it's nonpartisan, they're not coming to me and knocking on my door and telling me they're coming to the City of Champions. But with that being said, we are definitely mindful of the fact that it's impacting not just the City of Brockton, but the Commonwealth as a whole. So again, Courtney Henderson is someone that I value as a team member, and she's doing an unbelievable effort on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I think that it's not going to solve everything, but I do appreciate that you are having this meeting with the community partners to basically kind of relieve a little bit of tension and just keep our kids safe. That's all we're asking for, just make sure they're safe at all times. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent relative to her presentation? Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Vega?
I'll start off towards the end. This is the second year we've had a Harvard Fellow, or this year we got two, last year we had one, right?
That's right. And I failed to ask them to stand up and just wave at everybody.
And I think, you know, that it should be mentioned that that's a direct connection between our superintendent and that program. So it's an important piece to recognize that, you know, Brockton continually ends up being a resource for other folks. And so, yeah, very powerful. You mentioned the growing number of multi-language learners. So we know that while the state as a whole gets a smaller percentage of federal funds versus state, we know that disproportionately those funds are earmarked for multi-language learners. So, you know, like, what are the things that we're doing in advance of what, you know, possible loss of federal funds to ensure that this growing population continues to get the resources that it needs?
Yes. So there's a couple of different things we're thinking about. Obviously, just the overall enrollment numbers, that certainly impacts our budget for next year, so that will impact our Chapter 70 funds. So that is something, when we use this year's enrollment to kind of give us a gauge of what we're going to be looking at for next year. But one of the things we had already started to prepare for despite or before even knowing about the. about the decrease in our multilingual learners is the fact that our grant funds were, we had already seen that our grant funds may be at risk. So particularly last year, I think there were five different grants, the biggest one being Title I. We did receive those grants for this year, but we have been advised to be thinking about what it would look like in the future in the case that we weren't to have those grants. And so we are thinking about Title I for sure, but Title III is also one of the ones specifically that we utilize for multilingual learners. And while we haven't had any direct information about that one, we have recently received some unfortunate news about the Ropes Grant that we had received, which I'll be sharing with you all. So we do know that these, these funding sources could potentially, you know, decrease. What I will say, which is the same as what I said last year, is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our local universities, even speaking to the Ropes Grant, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, they are all being very supportive and active advocacy to ensure that these things are not happening. You may have actually received a letter, too, to sign about the fiscal risks that school districts are at. And while that's not particularly related to what you're asking about, that goes back to the issues that we even felt last year, right before these funding sources were starting to become at risk. So you may have seen that letter. I know many superintendents and union representatives have signed on to it. They've actually asked us to send it out to principals, so I'll be doing that as well. So there's a lot of advocacy around just the challenges we faced last year with transportation and special education and circuit breaker and reimbursements. But then they are aware and getting ready for the advocacy that we are going to need to pick up when it comes to these other funding streams. So that doesn't, I know, perfectly answer your question. But one thing that we, we did do at the start of this year, when we started to learn that some of these funding sources were not a definite, is we did actually, you approved many positions at the start of the school year during the budget cycle. We did actually go through those positions, and we, any that were not, you know, forward-facing to students, we sort of, you know, put as priority two because we want to make sure that we are focusing on those forward-facing positions. And because we know that if those remain vacant, then, you know, maybe it'll be less of a concern of what we're looking at for next year when we're thinking about staffing. So we already have started to kind of think of the budget that you approved, that we discussed, that we were excited about. We've already started to look at that budget a little bit differently and start to think about where we can be a little bit more conservative and forward-thinking about what could happen. Again, without trying to, you know, eliminate any services for, directly for our students.
Thank you. And could you just remind folks, you mentioned that the Ropes Grant is in peril. We did, we had a presentation on this about a year ago for folks at home, like what is the Ropes Grant and what do we stand to lose?
So the Ropes Grant was a multi-year grant that we got alongside UMass, and it was specifically to support paraprofessionals and those who are seeking a teaching license specifically for multilingual learners. So yeah, that is not as much of a priority for, you know, our federal government at this point in time, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Any additional, Vice Chairman, please?
Just to piggyback off of Representative Vega, when we talk about the grants, you know, Title I and III and so forth, have we, let me say we, but your team, have we actually done an analysis as if we do lose those, those funding sources, what would be the impact on our staffing level?
So many of our, so we try our best not to put too many of our positions on grants, but that being said, you can't avoid that entirely. I think that's a great question, and we could certainly come back with a presentation. I know we're doing fiscal updates. We have one tonight, but we could certainly come back with what that looks like.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, you know, you know, we all keep our fingers crossed that we don't lose none of these fundings. But if we do, you know, how would that impact be moving forward without those funds? The other piece is if we can, you know, if it's a memo just to the committee, if we can actually get a detailed report of all of the open positions that we do have in the district and what that is and cross that with our budget, so we could kind of get an idea. I know, you know, we're struggling to hire in certain positions.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm happy to provide that. I know that the number is about 96 or 98 right now.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chairman, any other members relative to this matter? Seeing none, we'll go to subsection B under Agenda III, please.
So Item B is the introduction and presentation by Dr. Beth Regalbuto, who is our CFO and Assistant Superintendent of Finance, who's here with the finance team. Under that will be the quarterly BPS grants update and a discussion and potential vote on FY25 open invoices. So at this time, I'll pass it over to Dr. Regalbuto.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to serve as the new Chief Financial Officer of the Brockton Public Schools. In my first 45 days, I have focused on three core actions. Oh, boy, I'm terrible with clicking, so if I over-click, I apologize upfront. Listening, learning, and beginning to lead. I've engaged in detailed reviews of our financial systems and worked closely with district and city leaders to understand our current fiscal landscape, and there's still a lot to learn. My goal from day one has been to promote transparency, build trust, and ensure that our financial practices support the district's mission. Our financial strategy is directly tied to the district's broader priorities. This includes high-quality learning experiences, ensuring access to all learning opportunities, providing welcoming and inclusive environments, family and community partnerships, and equitable resources. Our goal is to ensure that fiscal decisions are being aligned to support these core priorities. Strong financial leadership requires strong relationships. No one can do this work alone. I've prioritized meeting with key stakeholders across the district and city. That includes our district leadership team, principals, department leads, members of the school committee, and our partners at City Hall. Today, in support of these relationships, our entire district finance team and our partners from the City Auditor's Office and City Finance Office are here in support. We are actively working with DSE and federal agencies to ensure full compliance with grant and regulatory requirements. All of these relationships are vital to transparent and collaborative budget process. Looking ahead, we're launching several key initiatives. We're enhancing our budget tools, rolling out new, more detailed reports, and reviewing our internal controls. These efforts are designed to increase accountability, efficiency, and stakeholder confidence. We're also looking to strengthen our, redesign our chart of accounts, and strengthen our procurement process. The strategy is to provide digestible, transparent financial information that allows the district to plan, project, and report on our resource allocation and the return on investment, which of course is all about improving our student outcomes and experiences. Okay, so there's going to be a quiz on this afterwards. So what I wanted to showcase here, and I actually put examples of the financial reports for you in your packets. And all of this will be sent to Melinda so that she can put it in with the school committee packet for the public at home. The school committee dashboard is up and running, and you still have access to searching financial information any which way you'd like to. But what we're trying to move towards is a more detailed look at where specifically our funding is allocated so that we can, again, increase transparency, take a look at where we're spending that money and how it aligns to outcomes moving forward. So this is a look at what our, would be kind of like a function code report, so that you can see under each area where we're spending funds. No, you can't see it, but you will when you actually look later. So this is why the importance, the, the work is so critically important around redesigning our chart of accounts so that forward information, the ability to project, to plan for fiscal sustainability, and to make good, strong decisions when we're faced with challenges like grant funding being cut. We have areas that we can look at and reallocate to ensure that our students have what they Okay. There's a lot of important work ahead. From regular budget updates to the launch of the FY27 budget planning, we're focused on staying proactive and inclusive. Our goal is to build a budget that is reflective of our values and prepares us for long-term I believe that every dollar we manage represents an opportunity to invest in a child's future. Our commitment to you is to lead with integrity, transparency, and a deep sense of responsibility. Together, we will build a strong foundation that supports our schools and our students. Thank you for your partnership, and I welcome any questions, feedback, or ideas that you may have.
Thank you, Doctor. Any, any questions for the Doctor? I just want to let you know that as the mayor and as Chair of School Committee, I've had the opportunity to be on many Zooms with Beth, and she's phenomenal. She's a great addition to the team. The fact that she was a superintendent also helps us in many ways. So again, it goes to Dr. T's ability to attract really great talent, and her interactions with Dr. Troy Clarkson on the city side and the team on the city has been phenomenal. So thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, okay, we'll clap. Hey, all right. Thank you very much.
Paul. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair. With the dashboard that we have that was created by Open Architect, which gives the members greater access to monitoring the budget, I know on the state side, we have what we call the open checkbook, and the community can go in and look at where the spending trends are and so forth. I did have a conversation with the consultant. How long would that take for us to actually roll out, you know, for transparency, where the public can actually go in and look at our budget in read-only format that they can see where the spending is?
I'm not sure specifically. I have had conversations with our consultants to talk about whether or not we could make the dashboard, at least at some point, available publicly, at least some parts of it, if that is what we're hoping to do. I also think we are going to strive on our own website to have a financial resources page so that every report that I do here or at any request for financial information will be available on our website somewhere, our website somewhere, so that people can feel like they have access. And I always pride myself on kind of having an open-door policy. If people have questions or there's a place they want to write in, I hope there'll be a place where there's questions, and members of the public could reach out and ask for information as well.
Thank you. My follow-up one, this is, you know, obviously, as the Vice Chair is sitting on some of these high-level meetings when it comes to finances, the FY23 end-of-the-year report, the state said it needed to be amended. Where are we with that? Has it been amended?
Yeah. So I'm so pleased to report, our new budget director here is Terry Longley, and she has gone ahead and done both the amended amounts for FY23 and FY24. We're still, we're almost there with the closeout of FY25, but we're not ready to fully report yet. But we're, we've, we've done a lot of work to get to that process, so I'm pleased that that's all done. The state was very pleased with that information.
Do you have an actual dollar figure with the differences on that?
I don't.
You don't have that?
I don't, but I can get it for you.
Thank you. When you do send that through the superintendent, if all the members can receive that, what that is, because I'm assuming there's going to be some type of carryover, but the difference in numbers correct? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional questions for the Doctor at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, you?
Good. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's Cam. Nice to see you guys again. I'm here to give you guys your quarterly grant update, which I'm happy to bring to you. I have provided you guys all with the end-of-the-year grant booklet, and I hope you enjoy it. So, so I'm happy to report that for FY25, we have received 29.37 million in grant funding. This is due to all the hard work from our facilitators, our finance team, and our staff here for really pulling in the dedication to help us accrue all the grants that we need for our special programs. So I just wanted to thank all of our facilitators for your hard work and dedication on helping us get these grants for our district. So thank you so much. So I just wanted to highlight a few grants. So obtaining grant funding in Brockton Public Schools for us is more than just dollars, as we know. It's an investment in creating pathways for every student to learn, grow, and succeed. These resources also allow us to expand opportunities and strengthen supports and assist with removing barriers so that our students and families can fully engage in school and community life. Ultimately, grants fuel programs that help fuel students, help students achieve their goals, from entering kindergarten to learning to graduate, to, to learning to graduate prepared for college, career, and beyond. So I just wanted to highlight, in your book that you'll see, our CPPI programs and our CFCE programs offer preschool seats to our schools, our students here in Brockton. And we also have our early college partnership grants with Nellie May and two with DSE that help students in Brockton actually pursue their associate or their bachelor's degree while they're in school now. So that's wonderful. So some key program highlights. Student Wellness and SEL received 920K in grant funding this year. This helped expand mental health clinicians, specifically multilingual mental health clinicians for our students, help us learn restorative, restorative practices with our staff, create safe and healthier spaces for our school environments. Adult education, as we know, is one of our huge grants that we received. With this grant, we were able to support 800 adult learners, helping them support literacy skills, English language skills, and workforce, workforce skills, so they're able to be out and gain jobs to support their families. Early childhood, as I just mentioned, over 1.1 million dollars in grant fundings to offer preschool seats, parent engagement programs, and kindergarten readiness to support for our young learners. Teaching and learning, which encompasses a lot, tag, ESSA, things like that, boosted literacy, math, STEM, and civic instruction while creating pathways and leadership opportunities. And also our multilingual education and student support, which also supported multilingual learners, newcomer students, and those experiencing homelessness, so they remain connected and thrive while they're learning. Another great thing while working with our grants this year was the partnerships that we were able to create and develop. I know it's kind of hard to see, but I'll read it off. Starting off with higher education, our partnerships with Suffolk University coming in and helping us with our restorative justice trainings were awesome. Staff really was, had a positive acceptance for that. They really wanted more of those restorative justice trainings from Suffolk University. They would love to come into Brockton and teach our staff, so that was a great partnership that was formed. Partnerships with UMass Lowell, UMass Dartmouth from early colleges I earlier just mentioned, the YMCA, Brockton Day Nursery, Cape Verde and Women's United, all partners that we created through grants that we have to support initiatives that we have throughout the district. Advocates for Youth, Pinnacle Partnerships, which may I mention that through many of our SEL grants, they have created a multilingual resource booklet that we are able to give to all of our principals soon, that will be able to be offered to our community. So if someone is looking for food, food banks, or shelter support, they're able to go to this booklet and kind of find their contact information, and we can support them through that. So that was wonderful. And that's offered in multi, many different languages. And then our alternate culture, Mass Cultural Council, which was a pillar in supporting us, they supported many schools this year just by offering speed painting, field trips, the aquarium, the local art museum. the aquarium, the local art museum for schools to go to, students that haven't had these experiences in a long time if it weren't for these grants. The Children's Hospital offering STEM workshops through community schools, and also the Wonders Program, Klarman Foundation, which helped offer us our students musical instruments. All these partnerships wouldn't be possible without the grants that we have and just creating just the communication and partnership that we know that we're trying to help the community as a whole. We can't do it all by ourselves, so it was wonderful to have these partners come in and just be able to work with us hands-on and just support our initiatives through our grants. So that was wonderful. And of course, our City of Brockton partnering with the other city side and just making sure we're working together, supporting on grants together, writing grants together, that's a big deal, having that type of partnership and transparency with the grant team on the city side. So that was awesome. So I will say that every grant we secure represents more than just funding. It's a reflection of our district's commitment to opportunity, growth, and progress. These investments directly impact classrooms, strengthen families, and help shape brighter futures for our community. Each award allows us to expand innovative programs, deepen community partnerships, and provide our staff with professional development that they need to deliver exceptional training and sectional instruction and support. Together, these resources ensure that every student, from our youngest learners to our adult education participants, has the tools and access and encouragement they need to thrive. So as we look ahead, we just remain committed to building on this momentum as best as we can with the current climate and continuing to support our students, families, and our staff. So that's it.
Ms. Oliver, please.
Let's start from the beginning. First, I want to say what a breath of fresh air from when I started with all the money we had to give back because it was not being used when it came to grant, and then to all that you have been able, with your team, to bring into the city, especially to our students. Congratulations. What a great job you and your team is doing. And it's something that since I started, I always say, we need to do more with the grant, get the right person in that office, and build a team, and we will get more money to our students. I appreciate you all. Great job. And it also accounts to the fact that we have an unbelievable superintendent that has been able to put incredible leaders in each office, in each department, to be able to do what you're doing. And especially, welcome to the new CFO. But it's definitely a team that is due to respect, accountability, transparency, and anytime we have a question, you have been there to answer. And I cannot wait to see what FY26 comes. I can see you're so excited that we will be getting more, especially with everything else that's being taken away, and I hope that we can find more grants. It seems like you just find them in a grass somewhere and just bring them all to the city. Would you appreciate? I think people are jealous the fact that you're bringing all this grant to us. Sorry, she can't go nowhere. She's staying with us. But thank you. I really do appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time from the membership? Mr. Vega, please.
I just started with a comment. I think everything Ms. Oliver said is absolutely on spot, and I think that what's impressed me the most is that Ms. Jackson isn't in an office on a computer all day long. Like, she's in front and center at critical planning meetings. You know, there was an opportunity for the Vice Chair and I and some others to get together. Ms. Jackson was there, and the moment she arrived, she began contributing to the overall conversation. And I think that's a powerful piece. She's not just somebody that we're flinging ideas at. She's bringing the ideas to the table, and I think that's just been an incredible partnership. So we, you know, I had asked the superintendent earlier about federal funding, like what, so obviously, on the fiscal side of things, we might have to examine not filling certain positions or we're thinking about cost cuts in certain areas. What's the good news, Cam, Ms. Jackson? Like, where do we need to pivot in order to bring or maintain the levels of money that we're at now?
Well, I will say that Desi has been amazing, an amazing partner, just understanding what we've been going through, you know, at the White House, and just understanding that different funding isn't really going to be in to support us, maybe not. They have just opened up different opportunities for us to explore different avenues of funding. For example, early college funding should have been cut, but they opened up another opportunity for us to get a little bit more funding in, so it was like a part two to that. So they're really understanding, keeping in contact with them, talking to them, getting on the meetings with them every week. Our facilitators, even myself, to your point, we're there together, making sure we're representing Brockton to understand, this is the fiscal side and this is the program side. So they understand that we are partnered and we're working as a team, so in return, they're trying to support us as best as they can. So I will say, as of today, I think you guys will have approved up to 16 million. So we're working hard. It's October, and we're really working hard to just continue the funding that we have. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Follow-up, Vice Chair?
First off, I just want to say thank you to the Finance Office because you guys are the ones that are doing the hard work, and you guys don't get acknowledged. I just want to, you know, personally publicly thank you for all the hard work that you guys are doing, specifically the cloud that we were under, publicly, you know, thanking you for all the hard work that you guys do. Cam, you know I'm always asking you for grants. I'm big, I am big on facilities, you know, like I thanked the members earlier with the approval of the redesign of our TARP fields because, you know, the community needs it. You know, even today when we, you know, I don't want to talk about, but we toured somewhere, you know, very, you know, I was telling Mr. Vega, I'm like, your jaw's going to drop watching when you walk into this place, like, this is Brockton. And, you know, and I'm confident that this body's going to move forward in that direction and working with the superintendent and yourself to make sure that they just show that, you know, the hard work that's being done, not, you know, you know, we're here just waiting for that stuff to come to us for the approval, but I always say it's not just sitting in the meetings and taking a vote, it's actually sitting in some of these meetings with yourself, which we did with Kevin McCaskill, and making sure that, you know, what's going to happen. It's going to be eye-opening, and it's going to be a momentous moment for the City of Brockton. But like I said, I just wanted to thank you. I know I've been, keep asking you about that grant because the city needs two more pools, and I've been hounding it down to look at grants or anything because, you know, a lot of our students don't know how to swim, and this is an urban community. I know the committee back then, you know, got away from the mandate of students graduating because when I was in school, you know, you had to take swimming, and we had some unfortunate incidents in the city, and facilities is one of them, and swimming is key. I have my own vision when it comes to getting the facilities done in the district, and, you know, Ken knows, I'm always calling, like, hey, can we paint this gym? Can we do this? And, you know, obviously, we have to have the funding source there, but I just want to thank you for the hard work that you've put in. This is something that the committee's been missing for a long time, of getting those regular updates with our grants, making sure that, you know, the finance meeting and making sure where all of our dollars are going. But I want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing here, and the team financing, everybody that's down at Central sometimes. The superintendent kicks me out at Central just letting, you know, because people are doing hard work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Skolms, please.
Thank you. Yeah, do kick him out. Well, I want to say thank you as well. I know you guys are actually working. Hey, it's not, it's not easy. There's a lot that goes into it. I did, you know, do some grant writing process before. It's a lot of paperwork. Yeah, I used to work for the city. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of time and energy. We appreciate it, and also you guys coming here and doing these presentations is much appreciated. I remember a while back when you initially came here, presented on a few grants that you were working on, the amount and so on and so forth. One of the questions we had is, how much more are we going after? So I know-
Who are you asking now?
I know, as we have this opportunity and, you know, we know times are changing, things are changing, what are we looking forward to? What are we looking for? What are we in the process of hunting down, so to say, right now?
In terms of like grants?
Grants, yes.
So right now, I will say what they're offering and what we're hunting down is expansion programs for programs that we have. So things like CTE, they're offering expansion programs for that. Things like increasing literacy, the prison grant that we got, they're offering grants for that. So just more than I'm seeing that they're offering more for SEL, a lot of grants that are coming out to support students in emotional learning and behavior, a lot of those grants that we're going for that are coming out. So I feel like, as in my experience, based on the climate that's happening, more themes like, to your point, like the immigrant migration grants are not as important now as maybe the literacy grants. So those ones are coming out at a more frequent rate. So really, we can only go after what is offered. So right now, that's what we're going for. I never try to pass down an opportunity for a grant. Everybody in this building that I work with, no. I'm emailing them nonstop. Can you meet with me? Can we do this? Can we submit the grant? So we're always working. I have everybody included. They have a piece, and we just, we just keep it going, so.
No, I appreciate it, and thank you guys for the work, the support. If you didn't anything, we're not going to help you with grants, but hey.
Thank you. Any additional comments at this time? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Next matter is discussion of potential vote FY25 open invoices.
So less fun, notice I went in this order. So as part of the normal end-of-year close, I'm so happy to report that I think the Finance Team did just an amazing job liquidating our POs and our open invoices, but the reality is there's always those invoices that come in over the cusp or things that are late. So in front of you or in your packet was the remaining FY25 open invoices totaling, I think, just over 314,000, if I remember correctly. And we ask that you vote to approve to pay those because we have checked and they, the goods and services were rendered appropriately, and we just need to make them whole. So what the other nice thing is the team did such great work that I really do not anticipate that we will be coming back. I think this is really a pretty short and tight list for everybody.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
So we are, you can sit there, stay in there actually, and say we're not going to get some POs down the line that-
Oh, I'm not saying that. I anticipate, I mean, I hope, right? I mean, you never know. But I think we did a lot of hunting, like, we actually called and followed up. So we were very active in closing everything that we know about. There could be some surprises, but for the most part, the things that we knew about and that were on our radar, we hunted down to get to this list.
All right. The-
So, and I do want to distinguish these from the unpaid invoices that y'all have seen over the last years, or the last year that were part of our cleanup, because I know they went back to FY22, FY23, you know, like, I think that's where your question comes from, is what about these surprises? The thing that has been put in place by the Finance Department in collaboration with the city is notices to vendors that they need to bill us within 30 days, reminders have gone out to let them know that they need to invoice us. So the, and we actually, to answer your question, we have had a surprise or two that came in from FY24, but based on a previous vote of yours, we are not honoring those. So our vendors are learning that, no, they have to actually make sure that they are billing us on time so that we can pay on time. These open invoices, I would say you're going to see every year around this time as part of the normal close of the fiscal year. So for example, when we have tuition for June, we're not getting that bill till July because that's for services rendered in June. So we can't get the bill beforehand or pay the bill beforehand. So this, to me, is different from what we've seen in the past in that this is part of a typical close of a fiscal year versus what we were doing last year, which I feel was a lot of cleanup. So I just wanted to distinguish those.
That was, that was going to be my follow-up question as far as sending those notices to these vendors. Is that something that's just like your internal mechanism of doing, or is this something that we have to create a policy? I don't want to create a policy, but just to make sure that it's actually being, you know, adhered to so that somebody's not dropping the ball and, you know, after the fiscal year is closed, you know, you're getting, you know, a couple hundred invoices, and you're like, whoa, where's this funding coming from for us to take care of these bills?
Exactly. And that was, again, you saw as part of our priorities, right? We're even talking about automating the PO process, and we really are striving to do things in the appropriate order, right? So we shouldn't be seeing the invoice first, right? We should be seeing the purchase order and then paying the invoice and for what that's for. So I've been, it's kind of been an exercise that I've been doing. I signed 482 POs in person. I'm looking at every single one throughout the district, as is this entire team, to make sure that we are cleaning up our workflows and we are ensuring that the processes are being done in the right order. And that allows us then to go back and make sure we can contact the people who have the purchase orders and did we get your invoice? And we know, we can see ahead of time, you know, we should be expecting our 12th payment of such and such if we're doing it the right way. So that's what we've been really working on, and I think you're going to notice a significant decrease in those types of issues.
Just point of information, Doctor and also Attorney Cy have been working with Intermoderator Juan Gonzalez and also City Solicitor Megan Bridges. So everyone's aligned, and it's really, it's really a magnificent approach that they're doing. And again, this is, this is something that's going to be kind of a normal course of business going forward because a lot of it is just right when the fiscal year concludes. Do you have a follow-up?
Just one, and I know we've already talked about this, and I brought this up about two years ago. So we have our policy with the warrant system, and we haven't been following that in, from our meetings, and I don't want to overstep, but I think we're prepared, I'm just, we're prepared, but what is actually holding us from following through on that warrant system?
So we actually have a pilot ready to go, so I just, it's just a matter of me bringing it to the, to this group and letting you know what it's going to look like. Again, we've been working with the city on a process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Skolms, followed by Ms. Oliver, please.
Just a quick follow-up. When I was reading through this, I did notice that majority of the invoices are from June of this year. However, there were a few, good number of them, they were from 2024. Some were like towards the end of the year, some were like middle to beginning of the year. What's the explanation with that, those invoices and?
So they were still all part of this fiscal year. So yes, you're right, there were some because they billed us late. There were also, as you know, so that is a great question. There were, for example, I think we're paying the lease in here. So as you know, part of last year, so there is a little bit of cleanup left in here. We were also trying to procure things appropriately and execute contracts. So there were some areas too where we needed to, because remember, we were going back and kind of doing that process backwards, and so in order to pay some of those bills, we actually had to have an executed contract. So some of this too was us getting our ducks in a row and making sure we had the appropriate paperwork. So if you rewind a year ago, right, when we weren't paying our bills because we didn't have any contracts, so, so here we are now. We now have contracts. It's been a process, a painstaking process, but there are some for which we actually had to go out to bid, and so there are areas too where we had to clean up and make sure we had all the appropriate backup paperwork, working with the city solicitor to make sure we had dotted all of our i's and crossed our t's so that we could release payment.
And just to reconfirm, all of these invoices have been verified and services have been-
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver, please.
You took my question. I do appreciate the fact that you guys are working, especially, I mean, it's only one, two, three, four, five from 2024 compared to what we used to get, just as long as, like, some of them is also the beginning of the year that I see on this, that we continue to work with them, that they are sending our invoice in a timely manner. So we can definitely work with them because the last thing we want to do is not pay them. We want to pay them, but we also need invoices to know exactly what they charging us for and just make sure that it's timely. Thank you. Appreciate all the work.
Just point of information, we had a finance meeting last night, the City Council on the agenda was Foster Street, and that was Solicitor Bridges shared it. I talked a little bit about it, and it was voted favorable back. So that will be kind of a belt and suspenders, but it's going to be a formal contract. I know Ken is here, and he's been helping a lot on that. So again, the City Council did pass it favorable back to the full council, meaning that they'll vote on that in a week's time. Any other questions at this time? If not, entertain a motion relative to this matter.
A motion to approve FY25 open invoices in the amount of 314,222 and 37 cents.
Second.
So motion on the floor, it was made by the Vice Chair, it was probably second by Ms. Oliver. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. If you oppose, raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now continue on subsection C, items to refer to Subcommittee. Any matters to refer to Subcommittee, Vice Chair?
I know we have on, as of right now, October 28th, that's, we were going to do the Superintendent Subcommittee, but we're going to take that up this evening. I want to set up, and I'll confer with the Superintendent now, a new CFO. I want to do an accounts review meeting. Specifically, I want- Specifically, I want to review, and I will be putting the email into the new auditor, Mr. Juan Gonzalez and Mr. Clarkson, relative to the CARES Act. Because it was discussed on the city council that there was a, you know, a deficit of 3.9. But I just want to go line item to line item of how did we acquire a 3.9? And I know it's being kind of delayed with payment on that. And then I will also tee up a policy committee that same night. If any members want to review any policies, they can forward it to myself and our legal counsel to review and tee that up. I know there's some items there. I know Mr. Vega had something that he wanted to address and so we can address that on that night.
Great, thank you. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Langley? Longley? I apologize. Reached out to me earlier, so I do need to schedule a bid review meeting. We do have something that's very time sensitive that we do need to review. If we can add that on to the October 28th, rather than have it wait till the November meeting, I can work with Mrs. Campbell on the time. But as long as the bid review committee can actually meet on that, that would be great. And that should allow you enough time, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters they're going to be sending to the subcommittee or anything? Seeing now we can move on. That concludes agenda three. Agenda four is consent agenda. It's quite a few of them, but it's A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. What's the will of the committee? Will we take them collectively? Are there any matters to take out? So will the committee, please? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Collectively?
Collectively.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. Before we take a vote, I just have to read it into the record, please. Consent agenda A is the approval of the minutes, regular school committee meeting dated September 3, 2025. B is the approval of the BHS bilingual department, out-of-state field trip to Washington DC, which was October 21 through 24, 2025. C is the acceptance of donations. BPS athletic department, storage shed for the Brockton High School track team. D is the acceptance of donation Raymond School, school supplies from Clean Harbors, Unidos ERG. E is the acceptance of donation North Middle School, school supplies from NRI, Vazavia Association, which is N-R-I-V-A. F is request for authorization to accept proposals and expenditures of funds FY2026. MasClean Energy Center, MAS CCE, CEC, Green School Works grant the amount of $4,030,494 even. FY2026, which is Innovation Career Pathways, ICP planning grant the amount of $15,000 even. FY2026 Shannon Community Safety Initiative, CSO grant for Promise College and Career Academy, $12,080. FY2026 Shannon Community Safety Initiative, CSO grant for North Middle School, the amount of $11,500 even. FY2026 Safe and Supportive School Grants, the amount of $10,000 even. Next Generational Learning Challenges, NGLC, Learning, what's it say? Excursion Mini Grant, the amount of $6,750. FY2026 Creative Expenditures Grant, SELF EL, which is Access to Community Literacy Initiative, the amount of $5,000. FY2026 Creative Experience Grant, which is Reflections of Us, Brockton High Mural Experience, the amount of $5,000. FY2026 Creative Experiences Grant, Day at the Theater, which is Ashfield School, the amount of $5,000 even. FY2026 Creative Experiences Grant, a STEM adventure at Gillette, which was for North Middle School, the amount of $5,000. And then finally, G, Acceptance of Human Resources Notifications, Appointment Certified, Appointments Non-Certified, and then Personal Actions, which is Lees of Absence, Resignations, and Retirements. We have a motion, it was properly seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, raise your hand. It does pass unanimously.
On that, I mean, I know I didn't pull it up, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the Brockton Track Club working with facilities in our athletic department. And I just, I, I'm not sure. I hope he's watching. He does watch. He was watching our facilities as to that anonymous donor that donated those funds for that project. And if you are watching, I'm sending that email via the middleman and hopefully you can fund another project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now go on to agenda five, unfinished business. Any unfinished business at this time? I don't think there is. We'll move on to six, new business. We have two matters, discussion and potential vote, which is the approval of superintendent's valuation FY2024-2025 and then the elections of official voting delegates of the MASK Annual Business Meeting, November 12 through 14, 2025.
This, this is me. So several months ago, the superintendent presented her goals and her plans for the district as she came into. There's a process where the school department, the school committee does an evaluation on the superintendent. Prior to that, you know, all the members received this nice book of evidence on evaluating the superintendent, which each member was, had, you know, ample time to review all the data and actually do a thorough assessment on the superintendent, which was based on her four, let me try to get these pages here. I was folding and it didn't fold the way I wanted it to. But it was based upon, you know, standard one, which is instructional leadership, standard two, which was the management and operations of the school district, and also standard three, which is family and community engagement, and standard four, professional culture. So with that is, you know, there was four categories of how to assess the superintendent where the ratings required, if it was, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, or exemplary, or proficient in those, those, those areas. With that being said, the superintendent did meet to be proficient in our evaluation that all the members conducted in the, from the school committee. And, you know, with our contract with the superintendent, that all of the school committee members supported, her meeting the proficient actually extends her contract to 2028. And, oh, you don't know how excited I am about that with all the work that's been done. Myself, Representative Oliver, and Representative Gomes, we met all of the evaluations. We reviewed by the three of us and we compiled it on those four standards, which is in front of everybody. We've, you know, we, you know, you can't put everybody's comments, but, you know, we selected three comments from each standard, from each of the members that's in this report. And then the final evaluations with the comments overall, we included all of the members' comments in this process. This is my, you know, as the vice chair, first evaluation that I've done. I can't speak to the, to the other ones previous. Didn't have that opportunity to shine upon that. So one of the other things is with the superintendent's evaluation, it's a public document. So this evaluation will be posted on BPS website. Including in that, each of our individual evaluations will be posted on BPS website. So the community educators, they can go in and look and see how each of the school committees did the evaluation on the superintendent. It hasn't been done. If you leave it up to me, I would include all past superintendents so the public can see those evaluations as well moving forward. So, but before we, you know, we have to take a vote to accept this evaluation, I will open it up to my colleagues, Ms. Oliver and Mr. Gomes, if they have any comments far as the process of how we drafted and put this final report together.
Ms. Oliver.
Well, this is the first one I've done, of course. But I do do evaluation for all my clinical supervisors. So at work, so I do have kind of an idea. That was a little bit more tough in the nursing department. But this was definitely a learning experience, just taking my time, definitely really writing how I felt. And I think a lot of it, when I was reading some of the comments, was very professional and that comments basically state what the pathway we were leading to and just all the hard work that the superintendent had been doing, especially with everything that she came into. We really truly appreciate, I can tell by the comment that everybody do appreciate all the hard working that she's been doing with her team. So I think just reading some of the comments, it is basically say that a major, like, basically all of us do appreciate the work that's being done. And it's something like we work as a team and the mutual respect, just to see that. We do acknowledge what's been done and what needs to be done moving forward. And it's not an easy job. I'd rather be a nurse than be in your shoes. But I do appreciate all the work that you and your team has been doing. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver. Ms. Gomes.
It was also my first, but it was a learning process. I appreciated having to take the time to go through a, jot down some of my ideas. I think it was also important because it made me look back in where we started, where we are now, and where we're going. And I did give you a lot of credit for the situation that you walked into. You know, we had a major deficit. We needed people in the leadership position. You just coming in, diving headfirst and getting to work was, deserved the credit that you, that you got. I believe the evaluation was nothing shy of what I expected, seeing the work that you did and reading through everybody's comment and their rating. We can clearly tell that we all are pleased with the work you've been doing so far. I feel like we should do this more often to have the opportunity to look back and be like, yeah, this is what you had said in the beginning. Have we done these things? Yes, have we not done it? What can we do now? Or what it, what areas of improvement is there? But I appreciated it. Took us the time. It was necessary. Thank you all for completing the evaluation. But yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that as well because in the past, vice chairs and myself had to chase people down. So I really want to thank you all because it was professional, it was timely. And again, I really, when I've just read it, I mean, it really, people took it seriously, you know, because Priya takes the job seriously. So kudos to everybody. Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Azak?
Thank you. So I'm impressed. I give you credit, Mr. Rodriguez. I will say it on camera, I will. I'll admit it.
Not just me, I have.
Because I had to chase, usually, like you said, previous vice chairs would have to chase the members for weeks. And then I think the last time mine was done in the, maybe October, no, September. So this was very impressive. So, and I have to also acknowledge that Dr. DeHiliani, the way you presented the evaluation book for us just made it so much easier because we had everything right there. Or we could reach out to you if we had any other info that we needed. But just having the information right there and not having to go online and having to constantly click through one tab, you know, it just made the process so much easier. And usually, we do a presentation. So we do have three brand-new members. Usually, it's a presentation, but this, this is great. It's available online, but usually we, we present it and go over everything. Just so we can highlight to those that are watching, like Mr. Gomes mentioned and my other colleagues, you came in during a time where we were trying to clean things up. Not only did you step right in, in a little less than a year, you were able to get us on track, make sure our bills are getting paid, and try to run our district. So I wish I could have given you exemplary for everything, but I know when you do exemplary, it's a little different when it comes to this type of an evaluation. But we're very impressed with what you've done in such a short period of time. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. We, we're always, we always have room to learn. We always have room to fix things. But in less than a year, you, you put us, you're putting us on the right track. So I know I appreciate that as a member. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azak. Any other members have any comments? I'll do again.
I, when, just while doing this, you know, you know, putting everything together and compiling each of the committee members', you know, you know, comments. And I, and I told this to Ms. Oliver, I was just like, wow. It was, all the members were on the same page. And it felt like when yourself mayor and myself with Anna and Jorge, when we were interviewing the superintendent, it was just like, whoa, we were in sync putting this together. So, you know, it's, you know, the district's been, you know, this is just my opinion, been missing not to shy upon any former superintendents. I was just under, she's the second superintendent. While being a member, is just seeing the difference of work of caliber and the transparency. She brings a lot to the table. When, you know, she knows it. She's a celebrity wherever we go. It's true. I would, just even this past weekend, I was at MASK charting the course for the 12th time. But it was, you know, some of the committee members from across the district. And the number one thing was like, you guys in Brockton are lucky that you guys have her. So I just want to publicly thank you for choosing Brockton and knowing that, what we were going through. And then you wanted to be here to make sure that you lead us in the right path and making sure that our community is stronger because it starts with education. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the superintendent's 24, 25 evaluation report as proficient and as her contract stated, extends to 2028.
Form of a motion, second, please. All right, just to record, reflect, Vice Chairman Rodriguez made the motion, it was properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. If you oppose, raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Congratulations again, superintendent, and thank you very much. Now we have to do an election of official voting delegate for MASK Annual Business Meeting, which is November 12 through 14, 2025. Is there a nomination of anybody? Anybody want to volunteer?
Who's attending the MASK conference, number one? I, I'll be there. I'm not sure if any other members are.
I'm not staying until Friday. That's usually when it is, right?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Well, I guess I have no choice.
Anybody want to nominate?
I nominate Tony Rodriguez.
Motion's on the floor. It was nomination by Ms. Azak. Do you accept that nomination? Vice Chair, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Gomes, there was a motion made, it was properly seconded. Any more, any more people being nominated? I hear.
No, I did it last year. I'm not doing it.
Yeah, I hear by closed nominations. All in favor, raise your hand. If you oppose, raise your hand. It passes. Congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez.
But the, missing one more piece, that you have to also nominate an alternate. Yes, you do.
You want to be an alternate? Who wants to nominate?
Yes.
Go, Mr. Gomes.
Motion to.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan for.
For the alternate.
Claudio Gomes is the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second was Ms. Oliver. Any other nominations? Seeing now I closed nominations. Motion was made, properly seconded. All in favor, kindly raise your hands. Mr. Gomes, you're the alternate. Congratulations, all right. Keep going, please. Number seven now is the school safety, security, police liaison. Number seven now is the school safety, security, police liaison. I know Officer Mosley is here this evening.
Lieutenant.
Oh, Mr. Benak is here.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Benak is here, couldn't he?
Lieutenant Benak. All right. Greetings, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, school committee members, those under tenants. So first things first, last Friday, Marcyano Stadium hosted another Brockton High School football game. And from a safety standpoint, it was a success, as it has been. All the school police officers, they worked the event. We hire a K-9 unit, the Brockton Police Drone Unit, safety and security personnel. And we have an officer monitoring the cameras. We consult with the state police, the FBI, the Commonwealth Fusion Center regarding any areas of concern that we need to address. And this Friday is the next-to-last home game, and we expect that the security measures that we have in place will be consistent with the measures we've taken in the past, and we expect a successful event as well. So with that, on September 29th, of note, there was a, we've, a sealed baggie containing a suspicious white powder was found on the floor of a room at Brockton High School. Staff turned the enclosed baggie over to school police. The baggie remained enclosed until school police field tested the powder, which we brought over to the Brockton Police Department. It tested positive for fentanyl, which is very disturbing. So immediately notified Principal McCaskill. School administration was notified, and the two individuals that handled it properly decontaminated. It should be noted that there were no adverse effects reported or observed by those who handled it. No confirmed cases of overdose come from touching the powder. But although the bag was sealed, the room was evacuated and quarantined until a biohazard cleaning company that the Brockton Police contract with arrived to sanitize and properly clean the room. And there were no additional substances suspicious that were located by school police, and of course, Principal McCaskill's excellent team. Nothing was found. But in addition, just to ensure that we had a clean facility, under a stay-in-place order, I arranged for four K-9 units who specialize in narcotics detection come from all over the state to search the entire school. And then there were no other items located. As far as the investigation goes, in that particular room, the item was found on a Monday, and the item could have been there since last Friday. So we scrutinized hallway camera footage, class lists were obtained, interviews were conducted. There are no cameras in the classrooms, and there's still more interviews and re-interviews to be completed. So the question remains, what, what safety plan do we have going forward? So we collaborate with Principal McCaskill, does an excellent job with his excellent team, and for most of that week, all backpacks, all personal items were searched at the entry doors with school police present. It tied up things at the start of the day, but the safety is the number-one issue. So Principal McCaskill, he explained to me that most of the feedback from the students, I'm sorry, from the students and the parents and the guardians was positive, and no student was penalized for any late entry to class. That was happening during the majority of the week. So what do we do from this point forward? Well, I just want to note that nothing was found with the door searches, no suspicious items or contraband, with the exception of cell phones, found those. Going forward, there will be spot checks at entry doors, there'll be spot checks in hallways and study halls, which is authorized in the student handbook. So the word is out. And also notifications were sent to all parents and guardians, so just in the era of transparency, notifications were made. As to incidents in the past week, students' laptop data was red flagged for school threats. This is at one of the middle schools. No direct threat was made, but just so, school police was contacted and parents were contacted, a consent to search was conducted, and no weapons were located. School discipline will follow. It's important to note that in all storm mine parents and guardians about the goggle software that the Brockton school system employs. So that software monitors student activity on school-provided devices, and those are laptops distributed to all the middle school and high school students. It should be noted that that software sends red flags to staff and also the school police. If there's any content references to guns, words and images related to school-related violence, that gets red flagged to us. Also, school police received two separate reports from middle schools about a student making threats. That student was interviewed, parents were notified, consent searches were conducted, and there were negative results for any weapons. The school discipline will follow. So that's something that obviously, the school police and the administrators take very seriously. And finally, we continue to concentrate our resources on traffic safety. That's one of the biggest issues that we have going on with traffic. So we will continue to rotate the personnel that we have throughout the school district. We've been doing that since the beginning of the year, and we'll continue to do that throughout the remainder of the school year. And I think that just about does it. Any questions?
Any questions for Lieutenant, Ms. Oliver, please?
As a parent, when I got the information, right, it's very scary. It's very scary. And I, and I think this is like the time that every parent should have that conversation with their kids, that we are not going to tolerate it, do not bring it in our school. We are not going to stand for it because that is one of the dangerous thing out there right now. And we understand that we are in the middle of an epidemic with the drug use, and especially fentanyl. And somebody that has worked in detox and have seen the effect of it, have seen somebody overdose in front of her, I understand exactly what could possibly happen to our students. And it's not fair that you want to bring that substance into our school. And as a school committee member and as a parent, I'm asking every parent to have that hard conversation with your kid today, because we are not going to tolerate it. Because if a child had, like basically sniffled that by accident, that child could have died. So it's something that we need to have the hard conversation that Brockton High and every school in this school district is not going to tolerate it. And I know my, told my daughter, I was like, sorry that you were a little bit inconvenient, that your stuff had to be checked. But this is what we need to do to make sure it never gets in our school, and it's very hard because we have to start at the home to basically make sure we're having those hard conversations. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver. Mr. Sullivan, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions, Vice Chair?
More of just a comment, probably lead to a question. First off, thank you, Lieutenant. I know we stay in contact. You and your, your team do phenomenal work that comes in, you know, I support you guys in anything that I could do to advocate, to give you guys the tools to make your jobs better. I don't want to go far as saying that it was a student, I don't want to go far as saying that it was a staff member, but we do have some construction work going on in the school at the time. So it could have been one of the contractors or somebody that came in there. It's unfortunate it happened. I'm glad that nobody got hurt, and I'm glad that that student didn't do anything with it. And I know you guys are working diligently to make sure that our students are safe, because safety is the number-one priority. That, that incident, I know I mentioned this a few years ago, and I know with your leadership and I'm not sure if the chief or anybody else, or what we can do, this proves that your staff, instead of you relying on other resources across the state to come in, I think when it, in one or two, whatever, your recommendation is that, you know, we need our own K-9 unit within our school. And some of the people, when they look at dogs, like, oh, they do this. No, there's different types of dogs. There's crowd-controlled dogs, there's drug dogs. I mean, for my department, we have dogs that just sniff out cell phones. And, you know, drug dogs are very passive, they're not aggressive. And I think that would be a deterrent to anybody that's bringing, if they know that we have that, then. I would love to see that happen with the, I know you're in the process of hiring some staff, but this is a case of where we have to have those resources, that we're not relying on anybody, that we're proactive and not reactive in this instance of, you know, transpired. I just want to publicly thank you for the hard work that you do and the expertise that you've been bringing to the school police department. You're a huge asset. Thank you.
It's a team effort in the school police. They're excellent since I've come here. They do an excellent job. So we appreciate the support and certainly additional numbers of school police officers in order to perhaps at some point have a K-9 unit, maybe a drug detection dog, certainly would be advantageous. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Any other questions for Lieutenant? Seeing none, thank you. We'll go on to the next agenda. Next agenda item is eight announcements. Ms. Azak, followed by Mr. Vega, please.
Thank you. Actually, I was hoping I didn't have to make this announcement, but just wanted to reach out to the community. You know, Cradles to Crayons has been donating winter coats for the past few years, probably about eight years. And we've always had a facility to work out of. I've always had a place to be there with my volunteers. With all the downsizing, we've gotten to a point where there is nowhere to go. I've been reaching out to business owners, I've been reaching out to people to try to find a location. I am not going to turn away 1,600 brand-new coats. So I'm asking the community, if you know of a, it's got to be a safe facility for volunteers and myself, I have to be able to access it throughout the day. To be there, you need to be able to get the probably eight to 10 pallets of coats, and it needs to be accessible, double doors, to be able to get the pallets through the doors. And, you know, they wanted to deliver them in September. I've been asking and asking and asking, and we just don't have anywhere. So I don't want everyone to get into a frenzy. We will have the coats, even if they have to be outside in my yard, we will have the coat drive. It will be done. But I need a safe place for the volunteers and myself. And then what we do, it's a process. This is just not just putting the coats. There's a lot of prep work. We haven't even submitted the form online yet until I know where the location's going to be. But I can't hold Cradles to Crayons off any longer. They need to deliver the coats, and they're actually delivering them early this year. Usually, they deliver them in November. So if anyone knows of a warehouse, like I said, it has to be, you know, somewhere where there's heat, and somewhere where it's local, so at least our volunteers can go there. And I need to be able to access it. So whether I have a key or a fob or something, I would always be there with someone. But I do need to get these coats delivered. If anyone can think of a place, reach out to me, joyceazak@bpsma.org. Just reach out to me and we can try to, you know, I reached out to one of the colleges. We're trying to see if I can, I don't know if they'll be able to accommodate it, but...
Ms. Azak, I think the Westgate Mall might be a good place because.
Oh, good.
They have free space there. Sears is still open right now as, I mean, a vacant space.
Oh, perfect.
But when we needed early voting, they didn't even charge us, they gave us a location. So New England Development owns it, we can reach you, reach out to them tomorrow and you can coordinate with them.
Perfect.
Just throwing that out there. It might be a good location, pallet ready, and you'd be given a key. So we'll see.
That's it. I just, we need to get them delivered like next week. So I need to, I put a lot of time into this, so if we can, Mayor, you know, if we can just figure something out, we do need to get the coats because it's going to get cold pretty soon, and we're not turning these coats away. They're brand-new. They're really nice, brand-new coats, and our kids need them. So hopefully, fingers crossed, and if we find a location, the form will be on our website in a few days. So I'll, I'll reach out to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairman.
I was just going to piggyback through you, Mayor. Like, we have the Shaw Center and we have.
No, we don't have the Shaw Center. Joyce had reached out to me about that. It's still the annex for City Hall. We still have the planning there, we have the billing department there because of the construction being done with the opera money at City Hall. So that's going to be at least until the holidays.
What about the Wall Memorial? Would that be an option? I'm not sure if that's.
Well, that wouldn't be through me, that'd be through the Wall Memorial trustees. But again, to get free access in there, it's difficult. I think we'll come up with a solution because we don't, I concur, we don't want to pass it up, it's a gift, but we'll strategize.
I apologize. So it's, we had some amazing students, and they were, the students that helped us out with our backpack drive were amazing, and they're, they're just wonderful volunteers, and they were, they want to be part of this. I'm sure we can get this done in one day with all their help. I mean, we gave away 6,500 backpacks. I mean, they rocked. But I am asking to have at least a location until right before Thanksgiving, that's all, just to give us enough time. You just never know. You know, in the past, I've, I've done probably about 80, 80 to 90% of it on my own because it's a lot during the day. That's the only time I can access our buildings is during the day. But we do get volunteers. But it's just, it makes it so much easier if the kids can help out, plus they really enjoyed it. And I know, I know our Boxer outreach program and our ambassadors, they all want to help. I just need to find a safe location for all of us to work out of. So, but we'll touch base. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments at this time for announcements? Mr. Vega?
Just briefly, I just wanted to give a shout-out. We did award one neighborhood meetup this past week. It's an opportunity for folks to come together, residents, and it's usually about topics of safety. We had Chief Nardelli there. We had an incredible presentation from our social, emotional learning team, Linda, Linda Lecordo and John Snellgrove, that was really well-received. And an extra special shout-out to Sergeant Anderson, Officer Madero, and Officer Mosley, who, it was just, it was incredible, they did a presentation that tied into the bullying segment, and it was just wonderful to see them pass the presentation back and forth with Mr. Mosley on IT. But they, it was incredible, kind of, you know, seeing them in entirely different light. And folks had a good time, and I just want to give them a shout-out for the work that they did.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Just two announcements. Number one, the holiday parade is happening this year. There's some rumor out there that it's not happening, it is happening. It will be this Saturday, as always, Saturday after Thanksgiving. And also, I want to give a shout-out to Priya, Sharon Walder, and Kevin McCaskill. I was able to coordinate a meeting with Boston College. I had asked Dean Goodman in the Woods Program and Father Eric in the Messina College if they would consider coming and meeting with some folks to try to give free scholarships to B.C. They're ready, willing, and able to work with us. You must be proud as a double eagle. And I'm proud as a double eagle myself, so I just want to thank them because they took time to meet with these individuals, and we'll continue some conversations. So thank you very much, Dr. T. Any other announcements at this time? We'll continue then. Next agenda item is agenda nine, executive session. If I could read into the record, the two matters, executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, the disclosure of which may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body. And then also pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with the respective collective bargaining or litigation if, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the body, of the public body and the chair so declares. As Chair, I do so declare that. Brockton Education Association, BEA, Brockton Education Support Professional Association, Bespa, Independent Brockton Administrative Assistants and Technical Employees Association, IBAA-TEA, Teamsters Local Number 653, International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Transportation, Custodial, and School Police. Entertainer motion, go to executive session.
Go ahead, Mrs. Sullivan.
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Motion to go into executive session as stated.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. We have a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Standards is, I have to call a roll call because it's executive session. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.[1747.21]